With our first public hearing this evening. The first one is public hearing on our Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-1. This is modifying officers and employees authorized to issue municipal citations. And currently, I have no one signed up to speak this evening. But if anyone here in the audience would like to speak on this ordinance, you can come up to the podium. All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the first public hearing on Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-1. And we'll be back at 6:40 for the next one. Thank you.
Mark, how are you doing? Get your vote out yet?
Well, it did.
It's beautiful out. But, you know, it's gonna get cold this weekend.
Is it really?
Uh-huh. Rainy, cold, Friday's already. It's like, you know, the days we're working it fights out a little bit. Right. Right. It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train. You keep it in your garage or something?
It's always something, isn't it? Do you have a spot in Annapolis or by the bay you keep it? You just have a hitch and you lose the train.
We will go ahead and get started with our third public hearing this evening. This public hearing is on ordinance 2022-6. This is to adopt the tax rates for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. So if anyone would like to come up and speak about the tax rates. The tax rates are remaining the same, so I guess no one has anything to say about that. All right, not seeing anyone, I will go ahead and close this public hearing on ordinance 2022-6 to adopt the tax rates. We have one more public hearing at 7:10. This is for the Neighborhood Professional District. Thank you very much.
And our fourth and final public hearing.
Can we just check with CMC, please? All right, thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the May 2nd Town Council Meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance if you would please rise.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Earlier this evening, we had four public hearings. And I do want to take this opportunity very quickly before we get into public comment that I want to clarify some of the dates that happened with the Beck property. Back in February, the Planning Commission announced the dates for the Green Tree as well as the Beck property. And at that time, back in February, there was on the Beck property a 4-7 joint council planning workshop as well as a May 2nd public hearing Town Council and Planning. At the April workshop, joint workshop between Planning and the Town Council, it was then decided that an additional workshop session was to be had. That workshop is scheduled for June 2nd. That is the reason why the public hearing is not on this month's agenda. After the June 2nd workshop, if an additional workshop at that time is needed, they will say so at that meeting and it may not be on the June Town Council meeting. Okay? The earliest that I would even feel comfortable having it on the Town Council agenda would be July. Okay? So those are the reasons for the date changes. And that's why it's not on this month's agenda. So I just wanted to clarify and provide some dates and as well as facts to those. We will go ahead and continue following our agenda and move into public comment. Can I just see by a show of hands who would like to speak this evening? If those that wish to speak can come up to the podium. And there wasn't that many, so if everyone is good with three minutes, I'm okay with three minutes. If you would like to come on up to the podium. At the council meetings, it is not, it can be for anything or for something on the agenda. And the reason for that is when we enter into our meeting, I like to keep things moving. So any public comment on anything, you can come up for at this time. There will not be public comment once our meeting starts. Okay? No problem. If you would like to public comment, go ahead and start forming a line. If you would please state your name and address for the record, please. And I didn't really hear any major objection to three minutes, which has been longer than what we've normally done. So I'll do a timer for three minutes and if everyone can just be respectful of that, I would greatly appreciate it. You may begin, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you for the transparency and clearing up the timing. My name is Nicole Moon and I live at 405 Wendy and Old Drive in the Mount Airy Town Limits. I have helped coordinate and collaborate an online group of over 850 concerned residents in and around the town of Mount Airy. The purpose of the group is to provide information and ask questions relevant to the development projects being considered by the current Town Council and Planning Commission. I and those in my group have also spoken face to face with many locals in and around town to get an idea of the opinions of these development proposals. We have shown them the plans, the pre-concept plans, for and discussed the pros and cons for the said development and the zoning that was approved. I have not found one person in favor of the Beck development. Furthermore, most residents do not understand and are very concerned with the high-density development plans of Beck, Green Tree, and potentially Harish and LaSheerif and next, all being considered at the same time with minimal, if any, open space. Residents feel unheard in their opinions. As Councilmember Demoter stated in the April Council Meeting, the town residents, including myself, took the time and filled out the community survey mailed to us in 2020. There are over 800 comments that are from the public. Those opinions were loud and clear. Some of those opinions are as follows. The top attribute that residents put is their number one most loved part of living in town was the small-town environment. The two topics listed as not needed and not being an issue was affordable housing and the pace of residential growth. To quote the survey results when asked, "Which of the following affordable housing options would you support being expanded in Mount Airy?" Respondents clearly selected, "I do not support any additional affordable housing options as their top choice." In addition, the rank order of options were ranked as follows. Number one, no additional affordable housing. Number two, single-family homes. Number three, townhouses. Number four, condos. Number five, apartments. These results were nearly identical to those in 2007's survey, end quote. The second most liked attribute of living in Mount Airy was the sense of safety. Our wonderful fire department is made up of mostly volunteers who are regularly out on calls and have to ask for help from other jurisdictions such as Lisbon. With the potential of 700 or more new families moving in, how much more strain will that put on our fire department? Not to mention the ability for the trucks to maneuver through the narrow streets to get to said developments. Also, our relatively new police department is in an officer deficit. Our APFO states that we should have one officer per 1,000 residents. We currently have approximately 10,000 residents and only seven officers. I know we're in the process of hiring three more, but if we have 600 to 700 new families, that's thousands more potential people. We will once again be in a deficit.
Yes, absolutely, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. My final point tonight that was discussed and made very clear in the town survey is the extreme need for recreational facilities. The survey states, quote, "Respondents expressed a clear preference for recreational facilities that offer leisure activities in the natural environment." The top two most desired types of facilities that were listed were nature trails and walking, bicycling and jogging paths, and wooded areas slash natural open space. Picknick facilities were ranked third and ball fields fourth on that ranking. Clearly, Watkins Park is overpacked. If you haven't been there on the weekends, there's so many people there, my kids can't even play on the playground. One new playground is not enough. Clearly, we want and need and have asked for more open space, yet this council has zero plans to improve the deficit, even with the town pleading through the survey that this is what we want. Instead, we waive open space requirements for developers without a mayor in office at the time, mind you, and suggest that we have plenty of open spaces, we just don't count them as open space. Well, because they're not maintained by the town. Open space is listed in the town code 98-23 as buildable. Open space does not mean land that is unbuildable or unusable. Open space does not mean land that is unbuildable or unusable. Councilmember Galetti spoke of other neighborhoods and their playgrounds and open spaces that aren't included in the town's open-space deficit. We got plenty of open space, so I can go park my car in Nottingham and play on their open space. That's an HOA. That's not town open space, and that's not fair to those neighborhoods to say that that should be counted as our open space. The residents do not agree with this. In conclusion, the survey also had a below-average opinion of the Planning and Zoning Commission and only a mildly favorable view of the Town Council. I wonder how they feel now. We elect the Town Council and Mayor as representatives of our wants and needs for the town. Your opinion, your opinion as elected, is not more important than the opinions of the residents for whom you serve. I implore you... I implore you... Thank you. I implore you to read this survey, talk to the residents openly, and be more transparent in this process of development, especially this horrendous plan for the Beck property. Why spend the taxpayer dollars on a survey? Some of you, obviously... Thank you. Well, both of them, really. Green Tree also has no open space and is high-density development. So once again, why did we spend all this money on a survey that some of you obviously haven't read or valued? Your town trusts you to do what you are elected to do. We love this town, and we do not want any high-density developments. Thank you, and you may have a copy.
Thank you very much. No, sir, I can't keep track and subtract, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jessica Haven. I'm at 4210 Candace Drive. I purchased the Curly residence. It's still written as Curly outside, but we're right across the street from this place. And I was at the last public hearing, and I just wanna, in addition to what I originally addressed with you all and hope that you'll continue to keep in mind, is, you know, not only the light pollution and the noise pollution that the near neighbors that are gonna have to deal with the construction over the next two years are gonna have to deal with, but I really, I hope that the configuration of the Green Tree project isn't set so that the drive-through fast-food joint is on the corner at Candace. Is there any way that that can be moved so that the homes are on Candace Drive and that the business is not, that people are not entering into that business from Candace Drive? I just truly feel, as a resident along that street, that it's gonna become a very big nightmare for us. People are gonna be trying to turn onto Candace from North Main Street. Right now, it's just a stop sign, and if we really don't do a full-traffic assessment of that intersection, I think we're gonna end up with a lot of accidents and even more have a headache for our local fire department. So please, before we settle on the configuration with the drive-through fast-food portion of this retail business on that corner, can we flip it? And please put the park and the playground where the kids can play on that street, there on that, you know, on that side, as opposed to the fast-food restaurant where we're gonna have to listen to, "Would you like fries with your order?" at the end of everybody getting their meal taken. So, yes, in addition to the light pollution and the noise pollution and all the construction, I wish you to please consider the amount of traffic that's going to be on Candace Drive and turning at that intersection. It will, I believe, require traffic light or some sort of mitigation. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Heather Wallace, 2002 Forvines Court. I have a couple of concerns about the Green Tree property in addition to all the things Nicole mentioned about Beck. So first of all, the open space, I understand that they are technically meeting the open-space requirement there, but if you look at the actual property, much of it is not really buildable, and there's a significant slope there. So it's not, you know, it's not adjacent to the townhomes themselves. So it's not really usable open space for the residents of that neighborhood. So I think that there needs to be another look at how that open space is being provided. I think we're kind of checking a box. That's the way it appears that we're checking a box to meet the requirement, but it's not really gonna provide the space that's needed. The other issue is the design of the homes there. They don't look anything like the surrounding community. Big townhomes with alleys and, you know, back garages. We don't have anything like that anywhere near there. And I'm not even sure if we have that, I don't know, maybe in your, I don't even think it's in your neighborhood. So I think that needs to be re-looked at. Have you considered, because NYX does allow for detached and townhomes to be together, have you considered maybe bordering the property with single-family to kinda match more with the surrounding areas? Mainly, I just wanted to say that I think we need to look at every detail here and not just say that, okay, it's however many acres they met the open-space requirement, good to go. I think we need to look at the fact that it needs to be real usable open space because you're already in a deficit.
Guys, ready?
I'm ready.
Good evening, Mayor Haushauer, Town Council. My name is Mark Minjona. I live at 913 Leefal Circle. I'm also a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission. I come to you tonight to discuss the latest controversy going on around town regarding development. I am disheartened over some of the vicious attacks over three council members. It is uncalled for, it needs to stop. I have lived in this town for almost my entire life, 28 years. Seventeen years ago, our town was fractured and divided over something similar than this. As time went on, both sides came together and worked together when they agreed with whether they agree with each other or not. One thing I learned from our mayor Pat is to work together, agree to disagree. We have one goal, we all love this town. The yelling, screaming, and nasty emails are not getting us anywhere and just causing division. I have seen people with different opinions on certain issues being shut down and told to go move to Frederick or Rockville. I have also seen people being told to sit down with their thoughts. We are entitled to our opinions, and every voice matters. That's not just one side. I have personally seen people be blocked from that, residents for Smart Growth page. Why? For the record, no one at the table is advocating for 800 homes to go on Beck property. When a developer comes in, they're always going to ask for more than what it can handle. I am speaking tonight as a 28-year resident, volunteer of this town. I ask the public to politely reach out to our elected officials, maybe schedule a meeting with them, and they would all be happy to listen to you. They're all great people, they will all, they're all willing to take their time to talk to you. I'm a young adult who would like to stay in this town, but most likely will not happen because there aren't really options for young adults trying to start their life here. Hold on one second. I am not for Section 8 housing or low-income housing, but we need some sort of transitional housing. Not everyone can afford a half-a-million-dollar-plus home on a half-acre or to one acre of land. I feel discriminated when I hear many people say this town is not for young adults who are starting their lives, or when they say to your face, "Go move to Rockville." None of us want an Urbana, Clarksburg, or Germantown, but we need smart growth. All these projects are private property. The town does not own the land. It will be developed someday. Luckily, we have control over how much. None of this is anywhere near to being approved or started. When the vision plan was being designed in 2019, there were multiple charrettes where anyone could go to and ask questions. This is not new. This isn't something that just came up six months ago. The town does not look for land to get developed. And one thing I ask is, please be civil and respectful and kind to each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see you all. Wendy Peters, for the record, 107 Sunset Avenue. I'd like to start off talking about some very positive things. First off, Happy National Preservation Month. It's the month of May. We have a great topic tonight on the agenda to talk about potential preservation, so keep that in mind. Actually, here, because I do support the group of volunteers and the mission to save the Flatiron Building. We're about to see, and I apologize, I misread the agenda. There was a spot that says "Speaker" under Flatiron, so I felt that was an opportunity.
Those are just, that's okay.
But anyway, so we're gonna see a presentation and hear a very impressive opportunity. And better yet, the group has identified resources to actually make it happen. Since we're on the topic of the town survey, just wanna bring up, I've had some conversations, and there's been a lot of discussion about what the survey says, what the survey doesn't say. One thing I'd like to bring to your attention is the survey is a sampling, right? And in the survey, that was, there was a discussion about the Flatiron Building. And actually, if you look at the numbers, the largest number of responses together in two topics, 447, were to either refurbish with limited uses or the respondents said they didn't know enough to comment, right? And then when they were asked in response to selling or giving conditional ownership to private enterprise, that was 38% said yes, 26% said no. So I think we can find different things in the survey that we wanna talk about, and I think that's important to note. The executive summary lists top two issues, lack of commercial growth and downtown improvements. What's being presented by the volunteer group is an opportunity to work on that and to bring improvements and to bring foot-traffic to downtown. In addition, the task force also recommends additional analysis be performed to go beyond summary results and present additional analysis. That's what this volunteer group has done. They've taken the time to look at what we've heard from people in the survey and put together a reasonable alternative, alternatives that weren't available five or 10 years ago. A couple of quick things to note. Very positive things that have happened in the community. You all are part of it, leadership before you was part of it. Becoming a Maryland Main Street community. That's a program that really works to strengthen the economic potential of traditional Main Streets. We were one of the first communities in Maryland to be a Main Street. We have an opportunity in being a Maryland Main Street to work to rehabilitate historic buildings and to strengthen the existing community or commercial tax base. These are things that can be capitalized on with saving the Flatiron Building. Mount Airy was a sustainable community.
Ms. Peters, can I just stop you? The time has come, but based on your position with the state.
Well, I'm here as a resident, so I'm happy to, I'll wrap up very quickly.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
To say that the town has identified the Flatiron Building as a key municipal building in historic commercial district that needs a defined purpose and renovation. You have a group of volunteers who are willing to do that, and again, they bring resources. I'll close, summarize very quickly to paraphrase a quote from the former CEO of the Nature Conservancy. I'll change it a little bit to say, "In the end, our town will be defined not only by what we create, but what we refuse to destroy." So think about that, let's save the Flatiron Building.
Thank you. The gentleman that relinquished his time earlier, I will allow you to speak if you would like to speak. Are you, this is your time to speak on any item on the agenda? So if you would like to... Can you just come up to the microphone, sir? State your name and address, please.
This is not contentious.
Say it again.
This is not contentious.
Oh, I'm just stating for the record for everybody to be fair, that's all, sir.
I'm Tim Gaddash. I'm at 1304 Whitetail Court in Twin Ridge. Been here for 24 years, I think, 23, 24 years. We all live in town, and we're all gonna talk about things, why we'd love it, and all those things have been said already, and that was why, that's why I wanted to go to the end, didn't wanna repeat things that the people had said. But I do have a couple of things that just, I can't let go. So I know some of the folks on the council. Good guys, all of you, good people, the ones I know. I'm sure the other ones are as well. However, the people in the town who don't return phone calls. So when we talk about openness to conversation and things, I know there are at least three people here that have called the town multiple times, and I never got a call back. I'm one of them, three times. One was for Freedom of Information Act request for the sign-in for the Planning Commission meeting about two months ago or so. I think it was one of the first ones that the developer was here for. I got called back, and I called again, and I think the last place it got left was I had to fill out a form online, which is Freedom of Information, that makes a lot of sense. I might do some government services in my past, I get that. Had a problem with the form, called to get some help, called again to get some help, still waiting on a phone call, it was a week and a half ago. So there's a problem, I actually shared this with Nancy earlier, and I think that the problem that we need to be aware of with this whole thing is whether there's, I don't know whether there's something improper or not going on with any of this, right? I'm not, this isn't my world. But you've got an optics problem, and it's a big one. The feeling is that with some of these things happening when the mayor, when there was no mayor, no offense to Hillary at all, we're not good friends, we don't share from scows. There's a lot of perception that some of these things are being kinda jiggered and like the usable land on the hillside kinda thing. When those kinda things go on, people grow uncomfortable. And when you can't get transparency, people get more uncomfortable. So you end up with 800 people on a website, and that's not the only one, by the way. That's still the only Facebook website. So I guess my, just appeal to the council. Nancy as well, thank you for taking my information. Roxanne, sorry, my apologies. My ear's still in work, so we're Roxanne, sorry. Please change the record appropriately for that for me. Just talk to people, listen to people, and when people ask questions, please answer them. Whether that's public forums, one-on-one conversations, I would make time during my busy day to sit down with anyone if you wanna share more detail about my feelings and thoughts or things I've seen. But we're for a global organization for a long time, and optics are always a problem, right? So fix your optics problem, let people know what's going on. To the point of the woman who spoke before, if we can work together, we can maybe make something happen. Right now, there's very much a feeling, and a lot of people in the town, I can't speak very, but it's a big blanket statement, but a lot of people, that there's just things that are going on that are covered in darkness, and especially in the climate they're in right now in this country, that just doesn't fly very well. So do yourselves and the town a favor, and please be transparent. Please have more hearings, please listen to people, and give the answers that we need to have, and then we may find a way to make this all work.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim. Good evening, Mark Richards, 1002 North Main Street, Mount Airy. I've lived in Mount Airy all my life, and all of the time I've spent here has been on Main Street, except for just a brief period of time when I stayed in a rental house until my parents' house was built across from the former Ridgeville Nursery. Our family's fourth-generation here. I can't speak for everybody else, but I did fill out the town survey, and I'm here to back it up in person. I think that probably some of the people that are here behind me are here to also back up what they put on the town survey and what's important to them. I know that Green Tree is gonna come up as a topic tonight. In my personal opinion, this is only a scaled-down version of this. The green space, the open space, the playground is ridiculously small. The streets have to be reduced to alleys, which creates access issues for the fire department. Street C, Street A are all gonna be filled with overflow parking on both sides of the street because of the lack of parking designed into the driveways the way they're configured. At the very least, I would suggest these 10 homes being taken away so the streets can be widened to an adequate width.
Mark, can you just turn that a little bit? The council members over here couldn't see.
An adequate width. All this could be playground area, open space, whatever green space is appropriate. That's really all I have to say on that. High-density residential development, high-density development of any sort, I think we, at least from the joint-work session, I think people got the message. I think people started to understand the citizens' concerns. I'll close with echoing Councilman Demoter's vision, and that is, we have one chance to get this right. We should design a community with input from all walks of life, elected officials, citizens, and other interested parties. But this should be something that we could show and bring other jurisdictions in to see. and bring other jurisdictions in to see as something that was done right, something that the community was holistically involved in. Please consider that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there no livestream being broadcasted tonight?
CMC is in charge of our television and Facebook on town council meeting nights.
The town council meeting or the livestream on the, town of Mount Airy page is not working tonight.
Okay.
It goes through the Carroll Media Center Facebook page, not the town.
I don't know if that's completely accurate.
It does.
It should be pushing. Can we, can we maybe make a phone call to CMC, please? It is, the council does not control Facebook, so there's no hidden agenda, please do not read into this. I'm just trying to get ahead.
It's working or something.
I'm just trying to get ahead.
Can I just say thank you for pointing that out, because we don't know until someone points out, it's not live.
It's our normal CMC concerns and problems, so it's nothing really that new. Thank you.
In light of, until our streaming service works, I really don't want to get into the presentations, and I would rather go into the approval of the minutes as well as possibly Chief Reitz, as well as Bruce Walls and the Civil Air Patrol, until we get to our presentations and the rest of the new business.
Jason, it's up.
We'll continue.
Jason, it's on TV. Someone's looking at it here.
Yeah.
23 is running also.
Does everyone have it on their Facebook? Okay. I'll, huh? They're troubleshooting is what we just got a text message. So thank you for letting us know, we appreciate it. I'm still going to, until I get word from my, from John about it, I will.
I can push it out if I can.
Okay, let's just go ahead and do that, and then I'll continue on. The, the town council meeting is also on your local channel 23. I know that you guys can't do that here, but it's also live on carolmediacenter.org and typically the town Facebook page.
Mr. President, just a quick question.
We should be good.
It doesn't show anybody.
Okay.
So what's, all right, wait a minute.
It's live.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and continue in the order of our agenda. We just ended with public comment, thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and begin.
Sorry, is, is there, I thought the public comment was later in the agenda, but is it now? In that?
It's right now.
I'll just be brief, because I'm not exactly sure of your agenda. My name is Rita Misra, I live on North Main Street as well, 707 North Main Street, and I know Green Tree has been on, on the books for numerous planning. It's been on the plans at least 25 years, I think, if I'm not mistaken. And, and we've come out, we participate, and then it seems like we just start up again at square one. So forgive me if I've missed something in that, but the comment that I'd like to make is there's the plans on the property, and I understand that the developer wants to develop those plans, but I'm not confident that the impact on the surrounding areas around that property have been adequately considered, and I think that that process really needs to be done properly. I, we, as I think probably was just said, we do live on Main Street, but Main Street's not a highway. The highway is 27, it's built up to current standards, it has shoulders, it has, you know, we don't even really have sidewalks yet, I know that's been on the books for, for a lot of years. The idea of putting a sidewalk is to make it walkable, and we also share our residential part of this town with the fire company, with the schools, with business already, and I think that that has not been adequately appreciated or, or planned for. I don't know when the timing is going to happen, where you're going to put in lights to protect access for the emergency services, they're all right on Main Street. So I, I don't really know as a citizen how we follow that process, but the timing, the facility adjustments, it all has to be put in place, but we sign up the dotted line and agree to this type of development. And I would say the same probably goes for other developments in the works. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Thank you to everyone. Sorry. Is anyone, is anyone else want to speak after this gentleman? Just so I don't cut anyone else off, I'm not trying to. Can you just move up to the podium, please? I would appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening. Billy Wagner, 503 Buffalo Road. Almost a long life member, but while I'm here, I was four years on the election committee and 16 years on the town council. We've had at least three months here to think about the future of the Flatiron Building, and hopefully the thoughts are positive for keeping it. The concept plan has been presented, I thought it was very awesome, great, great ideas, and we, the taxpayers, would save a lot of money from not having to, the demolition of the building. And I don't think that figure's been mentioned at any time during any of these discussions because of the demolition. It's also preserves a lot of the town history, and we have a very practical and useful addition to downtown Mount Airy. There are a lot of grants available for restoring and preservation of historic buildings and which we would be, be eligible to, to get some of those grants, help keep the cost down. It's a proven fact that anytime you have a wider street, the faster the traffic goes, so I don't think there's ever been any serious accidents here on Main Street by the Flatiron Building. There've been a few mirrors missing now and then, but other than that, the, I think it's very important to keep Park Avenue open as well for the people that live in the Park Avenue areas, and especially for emergency vehicles to have access. So appreciate the vote for the, maintain, keep the Flatiron Building. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Francesca Pacero, 5515 North Annapolis Drive, Mount Airy, Maryland. I have a concern, because earlier, when you started off this meeting, you said that we were going to meet about the Bex, the property, and talk was supposed to be now June, from, not tonight, but June 2nd, and then you're saying maybe it might be July. My concern is, I, I don't think it should be July or August. The United States, we have been under lockdown for two years, 20 and 21, so this is the first time these parents, I know Frederick County goes to June 8th now, that they can get away and take their kids wherever they want without masks and all these regulations. I don't think it, it's going to benefit any of us to do something like this when this is the first time we can leave and go wherever we want with our kids. I think it should stay with June 2nd while school is still in session and people aren't planning their vacations. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just want to clarify, the June 2nd is just a work session, not the town council meeting. It's June, the town council meeting is on June 6th, so I just wanted to clarify that date, okay? All right.
Council President?
Sir.
Might be a good time to let the people know that the June 2nd workshop is not going to be in this building, it'll be at the carnival grounds, we have it reserved, and it'll be at the Activities Building at the carnival grounds.
I think you just did.
7:00 PM.
All right.
Well, I can take one item off my report now, thank you, Mayor.
The meeting?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Just to clarify on the workshop, is that nine times, most of, well, let's just say workshop is, the public's allowed to attend but are not allowed to comment during the workshop. There's no problem with them if the, any attendee would like to speak with a representative after the, after or prior to the workshop, no matter if it's elected, planning commission, or a representative of, I know, the developer, or whatever the, whoever the workshop's about. But during the workshop, the public is not allowed to comment. So I just want to clarify, clarify that, too.
All right. John, can we turn on the projector, please? And we're going to begin with our first presentation tonight for the Flatiron Building, and Larry, you can come on up, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just tell Barney to change the slides or whoever's operating.
It's over here at this?
John.
So just say next whenever you're ready.
Oh, oh, great, great, Council Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to, to talk tonight. I'm sensitive of the time, I understand we have some time constraints. I think with some effort, I could probably get through the presentation in about 12 minutes, presumably with some question and answer afterwards, but otherwise, feel free to interject, it's your time, and we could do whatever you see fit. I provided each of you also with a detailed written report about this, this concept and some of the available grants that we'll talk about tonight, and I recommend that this presentation be reviewed in conjunction with that report. I think plenty has certainly been said about the history and the background of the building, so I don't need to get into any of that, and I think I'll just get right into the proposal on the restoration. So, and one more slide, John, next slide. So one of the key aspects to this concept that we want to present is really not just the preservation of the building itself, but also the development of the immediate area surrounding the building, and both the renovation of the building and the development of the area with an eye towards the arts. Those three objectives, historic preservation, community development, and arts focus, open up a, a wealth of funding opportunities that otherwise might not be available to the town. And I think if we capitalize on those funding opportunities, we could accomplish the list that's identified here, which is really to restore the Smith Building back as a historic renovation and integrate the access around the surrounding area, and by that I mean the north side of the building that runs down along Park Avenue. We propose to develop a stepped terrace that would lead down onto Main Street, and then from Main Street, we would create a pedestrian thoroughfare directly through the bottom portion of the building to open that up for pedestrian access, and that thoroughfare would spill out onto an open plaza, that's a venue that exists between the Flatiron Building and the Firehouse businesses, and that plaza would also include a retaining wall as well, and both the plaza, the thoroughfare, and the retaining wall could capitalize on some of our town history and the arts. The main floor of the building, we propose be created as an open public forum, basically gutting the building, restoring it ready to go for the next 50 years, but the main floor would be an open forum that could be utilized for needed meeting space for a variety of organizations in town, pop-up art gallery, performing arts, different events, and displays. The top floor, I think we should design as a functional utilitarian storage. The town does have a need for storage, there's about 750 square feet of storage, that storage area could be secure with limited public access to that storage area. However, with an eye again towards the performing arts, another opportunity might exist to actually remove that floor and extend the ceiling height for an enhanced venue, then we'll talk about some of that in the next, or excuse me, in the, later in the presentation. Next slide, John. So we do not have, you know, at this time, many cost estimates independent of ourselves for this project, but we go back to the town's presentation, this was from 2021, and our goals are directly in line with option two. We want to restore the existing building, we want to add a plaza, and we want to improve pedestrian access. And the town figures at the time were about 1.3 million to accomplish those goals. It did not include the interior renovation cost of the building at that time, that cost was included, I, I believe, in option three or four, but pulling that interior renovation cost from the town figures would bring this total roughly to a ballpark figure of about 1.5 million. I'm not naive enough to suggest that this is a hard and fast rule, we've all worked in government before, I'm simply saying that this could be a launchpad for a figure to step, step forward with. And of course, the crux of our proposal is that the town not spend this money, but that we capitalize on this program to use federal grants and state grants to help offset this cost. Even at a 50% grant, grant match, the town's percentage of contribution could be at 50% of this cost as a possibility. The next slide, John. So this is our proposal, which is really essentially similar. We, we propose to keep Park Avenue open, we'll get more into some of the other design concepts in future slides, but here, disabled access, for example, could be gained up the sidewalk next to the Browning Building, crossed across the crosswalk, and go into the main floor of the Flatiron Building. Pedestrians could then also go down a stepped terrace platform to reach Main Street, or otherwise cross Park Avenue at Main Street, and from there, go directly through the building itself and enter out onto a large plaza patio area, that could be a good gathering space for outdoor performing arts, for example, when we close our streets and we have local artists perform there. There's dining options for all the businesses in the, in the Firehouse building, and we could, we could design this area, including the retaining wall, that's buttressed up against there, again, capitalizing on the arts. And the next slide, John. This is really the, the crux of the funding strategy. What we're proposing is now that the Mount Airy Arts Alliance is on board, is a 501(c)(3) in conjunction with the Historical Society and the Town of Mount Airy, we now have three entities, two nonprofits and a government entity, all of which could apply for specific grants in the arts community, historical preservation, and community development grants, particularly community development grants that focus on things like we want to improve ADA access and pedestrian safety. There are grants specifically designed for that in spaces, in historic spaces, just like we're talking here. And what we think is that this type of approach in a funding strategy, combined with some private fundraising and donation, could achieve the restoration of the building, meet our compliance and our safety standards, create a very unique arts venue both outside and inside the Flatiron Building, and serve as a community and business development opportunity for the town. Next slide, John. A lot of people have seen the model, we don't have it here, but these are photographs of the model. Over here to the left is this concept of a stepped terrace coming down Park Avenue, excuse me, that would end on Main Street, and then you could go directly through the lower portion of the building. The building is not that wide, it's only about 12 feet, and pedestrians could pass through that building and exit out on the other side into this plaza concept that would exist between the Flatiron Building and the Firehouse businesses. Next slide, John. From this back way coming up Park Avenue, there's a sense of a crosswalk here that could enter the main portion of the building off of a veranda, there could be disabled parking there in the parking area that currently exists, which could be modified, and direct access could be gained onto the main floor of the, the building there. To the right, again, you know, we don't show it here, but of course, we entertain- To the right, again, you know, we don't show it here, but of course, we entertain all the safety protocols of, you know, railings and landscape barriers and borders to protect pedestrians from traffic up and down Park Avenue. Also, I want to say, in the preservation of the Flatiron Building, I know, of course, it's not much to look at now, but nobody's proposing that we just slap a coat of paint on the building and put in a new carpet. The idea really is to beautify the building and bring it back to its historic luster. That would include a new main entrance here on this left-hand photograph, rather than the cromial door that exists there now. There would also certainly be opportunities to provide additional access off the other side of the building. But all of that would be dependent on, you know, engineers and architectural plans. Next slide, John. So I know Mount Airy isn't Italy. We're better, of course, but I just want to talk about this concept of stepped terraces and patios, of course, that are all over New York and Europe. Over here, just a gathering place, which is an idea of a very large step where people could gather, people could sit on, it could be used as a viewing space, for example, for parades and town events. And next slide, John. It's another view. This is the Spanish Steps in Rome. But you can notice, oop, go back, the large scale size of the steps that provides some opportunities for pedestrians to gather there. This is what we're proposing on that north side of the Flatiron Building. And the next slide, John. For the plaza patio concept, this is what we had in mind. There's really about 1,200 square feet of open space, if I recall, that could allow for these types of dining options, along with some green space landscaping, either embedded into the retaining wall or spread throughout the plaza itself. But this type of opportunity could be capitalized on for a lot of our town events, our town closures, and it's inviting. It brings people to the building. And one of the key points is there are grants for this. There are grants that exist to bring people into downtown centered around a historic restoration. And next slide. This is just an example of artwork that could exist on a retaining wall. There's a lot of landscape grants, particularly the ones that focus on the arts. This is just an example of a stone scaping with a wall sculpture that could be considered. And the next slide, John. Here's one that's relevant to our town. We could do a retaining wall that focuses on the history of Mount Airy. We have the B and O, America's First Railroad. We have the Civil War. We have the National Road. These types of themes could be embedded as artwork, not just into the retaining wall, but into the plaza and patio, if not the walkway itself. The next slide, John. Here's another example, again, just bringing this theme of the arts back into, as an appeal towards historical tourism. In this slide here, we just want to capitalize, you know, the building is somewhat unique. It sits right smack dab in the middle of town. And I think with accent lighting, like a lot of old historic buildings, this could be a really unique feature, particularly if it's surrounded by an outdoor plaza or a patio that has appropriate lighting. Here is a little more on the pedestrian walkway concept. What we're proposing is all-weather thoroughfare, basically to shore up and bolster the structure of the bottom portion of the Flatiron Building, to shoot it with gunite or brick or stone or whatever magic that engineers could do now to basically improve a walkway and strengthen the building at the same time. And the pedestrian walkway would interconnect the north terrace to the south plaza. This walkway itself could also be a venue for the arts. It's 47 feet of wall space, canvas, if you will, and there's plenty of arts grants that capitalize on opportunities for this type of space. The next slide, John. These are just examples of designed walkways and patios and plazas. You can almost imagine the, you know, limitless ideas we could come up with about Mount Airy's history, a lot of our founding fathers, some of the town events that we could incorporate into these types of designs. The next slide, John. Also, the building, as you're aware of, I mean, Smith was a harness maker. There could be a tribute in the walkway to the history of the building and the old harness or saddle shop with this type of theme. There could be a pedestrian walkway, and then the walls are designed to basically resemble an old stable or sattory. They used to call this graffiti when I was a kid. But there's big money in it nowadays. This is actually along the Richmond, I think, along the Richmond waterfront. But here, we just bring this up as a focal point, an opportunity for town designs and art collectives to basically present on a streetscape that might exist in this same type of opportunity, either at the plaza or through the pedestrian walkway itself. Next slide, John. Everybody's seen this. This is the Canal Walk in Frederick. These are 3D murals, beautiful pieces of artwork. But again, it's a real creative incorporation of artwork into a retaining wall and a pedestrian path right next to it. And the next slide. And of course, these are in downtown Frederick. It's interesting about the 3D mural art, you could almost envision the side of the Flatiron Building that faces this open plaza and patio with this type of 3D artwork design. But what's important about the artwork is it's not so much just the artwork, it's that the building itself could be a canvas for the artwork, and that contributes to funding for the restoration of the building. The next slide. This is the Petite Champlain. This is a famous building in Quebec. It's really not much bigger than the Flatiron Building. I've been there a couple of times and I've talked to the lady who owns the building. This mural shows the history of Quebec painted in a 3D mural. You could almost imagine Mayor Hushour's face on page two. No, I'm just, I'm just kidding. But here, the important part that I wanted to say about that is that in preparation for the mural, costs were used to renovate that building itself in its approach and ability to retain the mural as a piece of artwork, and that helped offset costs. Next slide. So I know that the main floor is not that big. You know, there's a few concepts that we have for the open floor space, and one again is just for small stage performances or production space. You may think that the Flatiron is small, but I have been down, as probably many of you, to the D.C. Improv, the Sketch Theater to the left of the bar is actually a smaller footprint than the Flatiron, and they sell to a packed house on a weekly basis. The next slide. The other option here is a small pop-up art gallery and venue, something that could be taken down and put up. It could be done in conjunction with the town, community events. The Arts Alliance could master this type of opportunity. The Arts Alliance could use this as part of their venue and meeting space as well. But these are just small gallery opportunities that I think we could capitalize on in the building. And the next slide, John. Again, and as expressed earlier, if an eye was given towards the performing arts, we could simply gut the top floor of the building and extend the rooftop in something like a similar fashion in order to enhance an open gallery with appropriate lighting and sound effects as needed. And the next slide. So really, all this is to say that an integrated project is more than just focusing on the renovation of this building. It's incorporating the arts around a community development plan blanketed with historical preservation. That triad approach really maximizes funding opportunities for the town through a whole host of grants that could also, you know, benefit the town, obviously, in our position, but substantially reduce town costs for carrying the load by ourselves with town taxpayer dollars. And the last slide. And this slide just summarizes what's in much greater detail in the written report I provided to each of the council members, but I just wanted to highlight here, there's a whole variety of grant programs that really focus on the interest areas that we want to accomplish, which are the arts, the preservation of the building, and the development of the surrounding community. And I think together with the Mount Airy Arts Alliance, the Historical Society, and the Town of Mount Airy, I think with the help of Preservation Maryland, this could be a real force multiplier to help achieve success in remedying that property that we've had for so long and turn it into something really unique and something useful and historically relevant for the town. I think that's it. Thank you.
So, before I open up to council members for any questions or comments, I would like to begin that for about seven years, we've been talking at a table in some form or fashion and about the Flatiron Building, and no one's really come up with a grand idea. And I know that you spent a lot of time and effort into not only your research, we received two packets and a, you know, a model, a presentation, and everything else. With all that being said, I just want to thank you for your time. And it's probably been one of the best plans that I've been presented with to actually consider some viable option. So, from a council member that's been up here for a while, I just want to say thank you for doing your research, thank you for doing your homework, and presenting this council with a viable plan to move forward. Thank you very much. So I'll open this up to any council members that have any questions.
Sure. I'll start. So Larry, thank you very much for the presentation. I know there's a lot of passion and thought and energy that's surrounding the Flatiron Building and the future of the Flatiron Building. So there's a phrase, and it is praise in public and criticize in private. And so, I first want to praise you and the team for all the work you've done, the research you've done, the creative ideas. A lot of those ideas, actually, you know, we're talking about the Beck property and what a mixed-use development looks like, and one of the features of a mixed-use development is incorporating artwork and art features and fountains and things like that. So some of your suggestions here really should make us be thinking about carrying those concepts over into these potential developments. So that was just something that kind of connected with me. You know, I have a couple of knit-nat kind of comments, and I can share those with you offline. My main areas are twofold. One, committing to listening to all the views of all the citizens in Mount Airy. One thing I've learned through the community survey is we have a very large town, and there are a lot of voices in the town. And part of my responsibility, I think, is to listen to all those opinions throughout the town. And then the second thing is that drives me is safety. I am a safety professional by training. I have a lot of experience and wisdom and lessons learned. I think one of my primary duties is to look out for the safety of the citizens and the security of the citizens. So I do have several main safety concerns about restoring the building in place because with all of the improvements you're suggesting, we're not physically moving the building. And so, we are not solving the safety issue associated with Main Street and the traffic on Main Street and the hazards that that poses. So those are some of the areas I'll probably talk about later on, but that's kind of my thinking. But I know a lot of work has gone into this. I think there's a lot of concepts that we can carry forward, either for this project or other projects. Thank you.
Great. I'll go next. Now, Larry, I would like to say thank you. It does show, as Councilman DeMoto indicated, that it's, a lot of work has went into that. Same thing as Council President Poirier suggested, too, that I think I've been following this a little bit off and on before I was on the council, and I believe this is one of the better plans that has come forward, and it is a plan driven by the public, by people that are highly interested in getting this forward and getting this moving. And as I said, I'll save some, I do have a lot of questions and concerns, but it's more discussion points, and we can have it during the later discussion. But one thing I did find interesting in the background, this was a military museum? Was that part of the VFW?
Apparently.
Okay. All right, I just thought that was unique and inter-
Mike Eco discovered that. I think he, Mike did an article for the Carroll County Times several years ago.
Okay.
And identified previously it was a military museum.
Yeah, and as Councilman DeMoto brought up about the safety and some of the other concerns, I'll bring a lot of that. But if we do move forward on that, and if it is chosen that this is the option that is chosen, I would like to see that it is, the first thing that is done, no matter what, is a structural integrity study of primarily the foundation, because I believe some of the earlier results or studies the town has done have indicated the, certain portions of the foundation have turned to sand, or the old cement is not as what it used to be. And then that might lead into my second question about the retaining wall. I'm concerned with, not that the retaining wall itself, but if we start messing with the rock and the structural integrity of the foundation is not good, once we start pounding on that rock to put the retaining wall up, the whole building's going to come down. So-
Yeah, yeah, there's no doubt. I mean, any decision that the town makes regarding this particular concept is going to step us into a several-year trajectory of planning. You know, the town has had two assessments that I'm aware of, none of which condemned the building, but they didn't identify plenty of problems, some of which were addressed. But without a doubt, for historic renovations, one of the first plans is to get structural and historic engineers out to actually do intrusive testing. I don't think that we've had any type of intrusive testing in the building done with sophisticated techniques, which means drilling into foundations, tearing down drywall, examining the brick. There's a lot of visuals that could be done.
Yeah.
But even in the best-case scenario, whether it's this concept or another concept to do with the building, the first thing that needs to be done is a full engineering assessment to really determine not just the value of the building, but if what we want to do with it is feasible, whether that floor can maintain the load capacity, whether the building could hold or an arch support for a pedestrian walkway. So without a doubt, that would be phase one in any effort going forward.
I just don't want it to be like, okay, say you get approval for it, and it's, okay, we can go ahead full-blown, full-tilt, but I'm also afraid that what would happen if one of the studies indicate that it's just not worth it? You know, it's just, for whatever reason, it's like the plans that you want, just, you know, the building's too old and can't support what we want. Would the, would it just end there? Or would the, because, you know, the more fixing you have to do, the more expensive the project will become.
Sure, I guess, in some respect, I mean, they move houses across country, and engineers could do amazing things. You know, my position is the building is either salvageable or it's not salvageable. Either it could be renovated as a historic centerpiece of a revitalized downtown, or it can't. And I think one of the options that we bring to the table is that whatever decision financially is made, doesn't it have to be 100% with town taxpayer money? There are no grants to build a new building.
What was that?
There are no grants to build a new building if that was an option. And in this way, I think we could capitalize on the history of the building and its importance as part of downtown, but bring it into a broader arena with some arts focus and community development to help offset those costs.
All right, cool. Thank you.
I think the last comment I would want to make, I'm sorry, are there any?
No, go ahead now. I'm not sure if, I wanted to make sure that other people had time to study. Okay.
The other thing I would just, I'd like to put out there is this idea of commitment, particularly when it comes to grant applications. I, you know, I'm somewhat experienced in grants. I've investigated dozens of federal grant frauds in my life, but grants are not a panacea. And the problem with grants is there's a window of time to apply for the grant, and there's a window of time to expend the grant. So the idea is that we can't come up with a bright idea to save the Flatiron Building and the town council approves, and then we start collecting a bucket of money. It just doesn't work that way. Everything is done in like this two-step process. And so what has to happen, though, is a commitment from the town to say, this is a great idea. It meets our needs. We want to preserve the building. It has some historical relevance. Let's move forward. And based on that commitment, then grant applications could start being applied for by the town, by the Historical Society, or by the Arts Alliance. What can't happen is, for example, because a lot of these grants are reimbursable grants, where the town has to front money, or the Historical Society has to front money, and then you get paid back after your expenditure. Or they might be matching grants, so there's some sort of offset. But I would hate to go forward in a non-committal- But I would hate to go forward in a non-committal aspect and then get down the line towards the end of the year and come to the town saying, hey, we got a $200,000 grant. You just got to cough up 50%.
Yeah, and that's one of the-
And to negate that would be a real problem. I mean, it would be problematic with, you know, the state and the federal agencies that are providing aspects. So I'm not necessarily saying that the funding itself in any particular year has to be in. I think the plan for preservation and renovation has to be committed to. And with that commitment, we could take that on a multi-step journey forward and capitalize, you know, on the resources that we have. And every year, the budget changes for the town.
Yeah.
I mean, people are eating a lot of Chick-fil-A. That's a lot of tax dollars that we could bring to-
Oh, depends on what you mean by a lot.
Yes.
Thank you.
Larry, I don't have any questions. I think your plan is very straightforward, and the funding options you have alluded to are clear. And as I mentioned earlier, this has been one of the best plans that I have seen as sitting as a council member. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Larry, the only thing I would say is two of my biggest concerns with the Flatiron Building has always been ADA compliance and not the building itself. But currently, we don't have a safe way to bring people with limited mobility, say, from the municipal lot to downtown. And then again, the safety issue of that corridor stretch of Main Street. It is a problem that it is not wide enough for two cars to pass. So that, I would say those are my only two concerns. It's a beautiful plan. Obviously, you put a lot of time into it, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it goes, everybody knows, there's thousands of historic towns throughout America that have buildings close to roadways, and there's ways to navigate around those with pedestrian access. And the building, to some extent, like Billy Wagner had said, I mean, I'm not aware of, I'm not saying that this is not a probability. Accidents certainly can happen, but I'm not aware of any particular traffic accident at that area. But the building does have a calming effect for traffic. Wider streets cause faster speeds, so.
So I have a couple of comments. First of all, as everyone has said, thank you, because I know you guys have done a lot of work, and I've watched this discussion for a good 20 years. And the model is there, by the way. You said it wasn't-
Oh, good.
This is the first time I've seen a group of citizens come forward to say, we're going to be there from the beginning to the end. So thank you for that. Couple little questions, and things came up as other council members spoke. So we've got a sidewalk now in front of the Flatiron. You have that sidewalk going away, correct? So that it wouldn't be walking along the building?
It'd be going through the building.
Right, so that sidewalk won't be a pedestrian pass area? I don't know the width of that, if that sidewalk goes away.
About three feet.
About three feet. And then the other question I had is on your, where you wanted to do the step-up thing, is that taking away part of Park Avenue? So you'd be-
As a matter of fact, 50% of Park Avenue is already closed, and that actually gives us about nine feet towards the center line to utilize this sort of-
Space.
-concept, along with some appropriate safety features. But in that scenario, even to extend that, if you think, you know, in geometrics, it would extend the footprint down Park Avenue and along-
Right.
-Main Street, that would give us additional space. I'm not sure if I did the math right, but basically, it's 37 feet from the edge of the Flatiron Building to the current corner now. And I think with Park Avenue 50% closed, and this type of terrace avenue gain would approximately give us another 20 feet, maybe?
And then my only other question, again, this goes with Councilman Munder. I want to point out that in this second packet that you gave us, that you didn't present, it's there with all of your details. Question on physical assessment and engineering examination, I think that's what Carl was referring to.
Yeah.
To do a more detailed, fully test and assess the building's structural condition using sophisticated observations and testing methods, et cetera, et cetera. So my only question would be is what if, and I think I know the answer to that, but what plan do you have in place if they do this in-depth structural testing and they say, this building's not structurally sound, it's got to go down? Just being devil's advocate.
Yeah, and it's not structurally sound. I mean, like I said, the building is either salvageable or it's not salvageable.
Okay.
I mean, that type of engineering report, more to the point, not just the existing building, but what we want to do with the building.
Right. And then, part two of that question, if they say it's structurally unsound, do you know, and you might not, or is there grant and funding out there that they could make it structurally sound? I'm just, I don't know if you have the answer, but I just wonder if that's like a Plan B C or D.
Oh, I apologize, Lynn. I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah. Suffice to say, there are most likely, and I think Barney and I have already talked the early assessments, have identified foundational problems that need to be remedied. And any type of renovation that we're proposing wouldn't occur without the solution to that foundation, the improvement of the foundation. You know, it strikes me, I've spoken to the city of New Windsor and the mayor, former Mayor Neil Rup, you know, they had a half a million dollars in a foundation grant alone just to deal with the dealment end-
Okay.
-for that foundation. And through Preservation Maryland, of course, they deal with, you know, subject matter expertise in historic remedies and these old buildings. There's a company called Strategic Debolition, which sounds counterintuitive, but their expertise is really infusing foundations with like polymer magic solutions that really make them, because back in the day, they weren't steel reinforced concrete like we could do now. But there are ways to resolve those. And so to any extent, the whole purpose of that engineering design would be what and to what extent a foundation repair needs to be done, and what would that look like? And either that's going to come back and say, no can do, this whole building just has to go, it's not going to be safe whatever we do, in which case, that's the fate of the Flatiron Building. But I don't think that they'll come back. I think they'll come back with a solution. And whether that solution is cost-effective or viable is a question for another day.
Thank you. So clearly, as everyone has said, you've thought it all out, and thank you for leading this, doing this, taking this on. Federal government's loss that you retired, I think it's our gain. So thank you and the group that's working on this and doing all this work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Council President, do I get to participate in this discussion today?
Sure.
So Larry, I had some questions as well.
Do you want me to come back up?
It's probably-
Yes, please.
There you go.
You were just too quick to get off that podium.
I don't know. I must be sitting down here in the dark, so. My question for you is, because if we do go through with the plan and the concept that you're talking about, I think that probably the best way to do it would be for me to form a task force. And my question is, how many people have you been meeting with, and how often? And can you tell me the size of this group of volunteers?
Yeah, essentially, we have five core volunteers, Jimmy Linton, Jim Molesworth, Terry Baker, and John Simpson. I've spoken to Katie Dragante, Mike Eco, or Corser, both the representatives for the Mountain Arts Alliance and the Historical Society, so we could use them as a force multiplier. And then there's other volunteers that I suspect would step up in town, people that we just haven't committed to yet. But again, as I've said before, I'm ready, willing, and able to kind of spearhead this type of effort, you know, with the backing of the town and these nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of value in, even when you look beyond the building, similar to when we start on rails and trails, you start getting people out there, and you build a sense of community. And I think, I look at this project, and I see an opportunity for the town to come together on something that is good and create something of value for the town. So I appreciate your effort as well. And if this is the option that we go down, I'm totally on board with it, willing to form a task force, get you all together, and figure it out, give you the help that you need from the town staff, and liaison myself or offer it up to a council member. So if this is the route that we go, I'm ready to jump in the deep end of the pool and get it done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation will be from Design Collective on their options for the Flatiron Building or the site itself. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matt Herbert. I'm with Design Collective, and we were asked to look at further development of the Flatiron Site based on the community master plan work that we were fortunate enough to work with the city on in 2019 and 2020. So what we're going to do is walk through basically the site. You're going to see some of the overlap with the notion of keeping the building addressed in the presentation, as well as looking at all the other concepts from the master plan, which included closing Park Avenue, developing a larger municipal shared-use building, then subsequently in meetings with the user group, looking at options where we maintain Park Avenue, whether with the existing Flatiron Building that you see here now, or if it is deemed unsuitable, a new municipal building and basically in its location, integrating the same kind of options that were discussed in terms of plaza and addressing the concerns from getting down from the municipal lot from Veterans, across Veterans Park down to Main Street. One thing that's kind of important to note is that the city controls the lot between Park Avenue and Veterans. So as we're looking at these different options, that parcel's kind of thought about and how it could inform them, how it could be used as a future development option for the city or be integrated into this overall project. So as everyone is familiar with, the Flatiron Building does hold a place of significance in the center of town. It is also, as has been discussed, a bit of a tricky spot in town as grade goes up along Park Avenue, but also rather sharply with the aforementioned boulder to the southern side of the building, which does present some issues. And then the view coming down from Veterans to Park near the automotive shop as you come down to Main Street is the other view. The upper right is, just to echo the concerns of the folks that are on the council, that's the view right along the street. As was mentioned, the existing sidewalk there is about three feet and is interrupted by a power pole. So there are some constraints if the building is to be preserved that would have to be addressed in terms of the site planning utility, as well as the structural condition of the building, and moreover, the soils and impacts of the road and wash-off from the north side. So we'll go ahead and walk through basically how the building's been used and what could be done there. One of the things that was primarily identified as a concern to the community was access. So again, getting from the municipal lot and from the Veterans Road down to Main Street, so the notion that anything that happens within this building would integrate an elevator so that it would accommodate some form of accessible route to better connect Main Street to the parking lot, to the other facilities above Main Street, along Park. With that, the building has its usual assembly space or support spaces, excuse me. And then we looked at various options based on the rich history of the building, where it has been used as a community space, office space for the state police, was used as a museum, has been used as a gallery. So we put in all types kind of building blocks into this matrix of program to then figure out, you know, how could that be configured, whether it's in the existing building or a new building. Moving along, so the first option was from the original master plan, which envisioned Park Avenue being closed. So what you see on screen is an enlarged pull-off area to accommodate parallel parking. It's been mentioned a number of times about narrow streets do slow traffic down. The same is said when you parallel park along it, usually people go a little slower to avoid those clapping mirrors. And one of the things that happens along here is that that extension to the south would really help connect Main Street, and that the notion of the plaza to the south of the existing building could be really dynamic to continue the activity along Main Street. In this option, we've then replicated that on the north side, as the building fronts the street, kind of terminating the access, visual access as you come down Main Street with some kind of marker on the corner of the building, paying reference to the history of the building if it is not indeed able to be saved. The benefit here is the larger footprint, the larger area of development allows for easier transition of grades, integration of ADA access again through the building, also widening some of the existing accesses, pedestrian access from the municipal lot along Veterans down to Main Street. Creates additional public open space in front of the existing retail, greater plaza, greater relief space for everybody who enjoy the parades and street events that happen throughout the year in this town. On the upper floor, the notion is that this building would have basically a through lobby. So similar to other buildings in Main Street, where you can come through and then transverse down through the building to the lower level, we would envision that that would be potential for this type of development here, where again, you could have larger community rooms, city offices, leasable space, any number of uses that could be accommodated. And then within this option, the building could either be two or three stories, depending on the appetite and the budget for the city. The next slide is basically just showing the overall kind of enlarged plan. So again, the idea that you could have retail along Main Street, pop-up gallery space with support, principally the elevator. All right, and then, well, you go ahead back down. Going up to the second floor, again, the idea that you can come through the building, go ahead to the next one, and connect back down through Main Street.
Go back one and stag. Thank you.
So again, the program has the flexibility to accommodate community rooms, flexible spaces, as well as potentially offices. These are, again, are just ideas for what can fit on the site, showing the opportunities that are available to the city. The next option looks at if Park Avenue is maintained and it's slightly modified from its current configuration. As previously discussed, there is some additional shoulder space on Park Avenue that we look to take out of this while maintaining the one-way cart path, and then using that to help create a plaza space that is more naturalistic at the northern end of the site. Still envisioning, in this instance, this is if, again, the Flatiron is not able to be preserved, but looking at a smaller building on a similar footprint. But in that new construction, taking advantage of pulling it back from the road, creating potentially some additional parallel parking along the street, but would have to be coordinated with utilities for the aforementioned utility pole. But also just to show that similar-sized program then fits. In this option as well, to the south, you still have the availability in conjunction with a neighboring parcel to potentially enhance that, remove the couple head-in spaces, and further develop the plaza space to the south, although it is technically not part of the property of the Flatiron Building. In this instance, again, on the first floor, there's an entry plaza, there's an opportunity for low seating walls to help transition that grade from Park Avenue down to Main Street. And again, just showing that large community space could be fit into this level with the adjoining support. And then if we go to the next floor, you have the ability, again, to use that lobby as transitional space for ADA access, so people coming across can cross the street, go through the building, use the elevator, transition down to Main Street, and be at grade there. Still providing an opportunity, albeit smaller, for potentially offices or even potential gallery space. Just again, showing the overall flexibility that is there with the building and its intended uses. And lastly, oh, wings, that was just the floor plan blow. Lastly, we looked at the site if there were no building. If it was unfortunately deemed the building was to come down, and that there is no need for the city to develop a new building in that space, what could it potentially be as open space? And in this option, we looked at it with Park Avenue both being open, and then you'll see in the future slides with Park Avenue being closed. So in this option, we're again taking a little bit of that room out of Park Avenue to get that extra sidewalk space to allow for the transition down along the street to help with the slopes. We're cutting in around the boulder, creating some terrace retaining conditions just to help break down the scale along Main Street. And then we've created a slightly elevated area just off the sidewalk so that any seating or outdoor plaza there would be slightly removed, so it doesn't feel like somebody's walking right past you as you're sitting there, but just to give it a slightly different sense of place. And then a modest ADA ramp to accommodate access to that upper Plaza. In this option, we did note that the absence of the Flatiron Building leaves a hole in the visual access along Main Street. So the idea that some kind of historic piece, artwork, sculpture, something of a vertical nature there is what is being indicated in that kind of large white box there is an idea that if the building couldn't be saved, maybe there's something that can be presented as an homage to it. And then lastly, looking at the overall option, if Park was closed, you generate a lot more open space. And in this instance, looking at a much more romanticized access route along from Veterans down to Main Street, the idea of little pocket parks along there, transitional terraces and seating while still allowing for a significant amount of seating off to the street at the lower level on Main Street. And this one could really be quite dynamic during those times where there are festival events, parades. You could really imagine a wonderful gathering spaces of a variety of scales here created for larger groups, but then smaller groups throughout the landscaped area. In either of these options, the, the development and assisting of kind of elevating the grade along the existing retail is only going to help further enhance Main Street. The grade as it transitions along the existing buildings to the south is quite challenging. So with this work, there's enough rework done that those potential spaces grain more outdoor space and a higher degree of usability to further enhance the presence along Main Street. Basically that, you know, is in summary, there's the option from the master plan that was to close Main Street and create a, a larger building of mixed use to, to either keep the existing building or replace with keeping Park Avenue open. And then the options to, if unfortunately the building is removed, have open space with Park Avenue and then potentially conceived with, without Park Avenue. And with that, I would turn it over to any questions.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Council members, any questions or comments? You're available. Go ahead.
Yes. So, so thank you very much for the presentation. A couple observations. I, I think all of these options are appealing to me. I like some of the terms you used. I like how you said this helps connect Main Street. It helps kind of complete our Main Street. I see these as addressing the safety concerns on Main Street, where we have a very narrow Main Street where the existing Flatiron Building is. I liked the building blocks approach of the medium-sized building. I think it brings in the elements of the arts. There's like art, art rooms and retail space and community space. So that's appealing. These options also seem to represent the preferred options that our citizens have told us in the 2020 community survey. So they, they seem to align with that as well. So two of the big issues that were identified in the community survey were traffic safety on Main Street and revitalizing downtown. Those are the top two issues needing urgent and immediate attention. So I think these options help to address those concerns. So I appreciate the, the effort and thank you very much.
I would just like to say thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and gives us a lot to think, to think about here.
Awesome. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hey, do I get to play again?
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor.
Geez. Tell you what.
It's not done on purpose.
I've been there six months. Actually, my, I have a comment and then a question for the council and, and I thank you as well for the presentation. And I think that the concepts that were put up there are, are good to look at and certainly give us a perspective on everything. What I'd like to say to the council is, first of all, and I've always been adamant about this the entire time I was running for office and when I got in, and that's that I do believe Park Avenue needs to stay open. And we are indeed looking at a parade ground tonight and, and that's a consideration as well. Park Avenue is vital for emergency services and for, and for the town itself and, and our heritage and everything that goes on here. Second of all, I would ask the council to think about this and you don't have to chime in with an answer, but in the world of priorities, the thing that is most needed in this town is a police station. And we're looking at a very expensive building option in this. And what I would ask this council is how would you plan on paying for it? Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you. Larry, I wrote a note to myself. Don't forget, Larry.
I appreciate it.
No problem. That's why I was giggling. All right. We will, we don't have any speakers this evening. We will move into the approval of the council meeting minutes and closed meeting minutes and any minutes related thereto. April 2022 Town Council Meeting Minutes, April 2022 Closed Meeting Minutes to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in matters directly related thereto Barkus and Humphries Properties on South Main Street. April 2022 Public Hearing Minutes, Ordinance 2022-4, Proposed Changes to the Community Commercial District. April 2022 Public Hearing Minutes, Hearing Minutes, Annexation Resolution Number 44, Regular Property, as well as April 2022 Joint Hearing, Public Hearing Minutes, Town Council and Planning Commission, related thereto Green Tree Property. I'll make a motion for those. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Reed, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move forward with the Mount Airy Police Department Monthly Report with Chief Reitz. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Chief Reitz with the Mount Airy Police Department, Monthly Report for the month of April. During the month of April, we've attended several meetings and trainings. Overall, we trained, we attended the Maryland Municipal League Police Executive Association Training Conference in Ocean City. We attended a Carroll Community College Criminal Justice Advisory Board meeting at the Carroll County Sheriff's Office at their training academy. We also attended a meeting with the Aurora Watch Guard regarding installation, programming, training, and implementation of the Mount Airy Police Department Body worn Camera Program, which is mandated by law to be in effect by 2025. So we're ahead of schedule on that. We're set to go live with our program hopefully by the end of May, this, this upcoming month or this coming month. Corporal Geneva attended Defensive Tactics Instructor School, which was a two-week school held at the Maryland Police Correctional Training Center in Sykesville. And Corporal Brooks also attended a speed monitoring system training held by the Maryland Police Correctional Training Commission in Sykesville as well. Firearms Qualifications is well underway for the year at the direction of Corporal Geneva, who's the department firearms instructor is ongoing and for the sworn members of the department. As far as community outreach, we participated in the Drug Takeback Day on April 23rd. The Mount Airy Police Department partnered with the Towns Recycling and Sanitation Commission on Saturday, April 23rd for its bi-annual Drug Takeback Day. It was widely successful collecting over 15 large, what I would describe as lawn bags of unused and expired medications. With that said, also as a reminder, the Mount Airy Police Department is also a designated collection site and offers a receptacle, receptacle, receptacle. I'm stuck with that word.
Bring your expired drugs to the police station.
It's, it's, it's the station lobby and it's for routine disposal of over-the-counter and prescription medications. We also participated in the Special Olympics Spring Games on April 27th. Myself and Corporal Brooks attended those. It was also the 50th anniversary of the Spring Games in Westminster. The event was held with over 260 special athletes from 27 different schools in Carroll County and they participated in this annual competition. Corporal Brooks represented the Mount Airy Police Department as part of the Carroll County Combined Law Enforcement Color Guard and I represented our command staff on scene. We also had to roll out for our Business Patrol Initiative. The Mount Airy Police Department launched a new community policing initiative this month. But it was called the Business Patrol Initiative is designed to implement direct focus patrol in the business areas of town. Each sworn member in the department is assigned a group of businesses to liaison with and establish personal contact with the business staff. The Business Patrol Initiative serves as another building block and the foundation of our important partnerships with our business community. As far as calls for service, this month, in the month of April, we handled 727 calls for service. This was an increase of 24% from the calls for service from the previous month of March, 6% increase in calls and service in comparison with last April. For traffic enforcement, we conducted 138 traffic stops in town. We issued 44 traffic citations, 146 warnings, nine safety equipment repair orders. We made one DUI arrest and four other traffic arrests. As far as criminal enforcement through town, we handled 29 Group A offenses. And in order of a frequency, we had nine larceny theft of offenses, seven assaults, six drug narcotic offenses, three vandalism and destruction of property calls, two frauds, one counterfeiting and forgery call, and one pornography obscene material call that we handled. This was a 16% increase in Group A offenses in comparison with March of 2022. For our Group B offenses, we handled eight offenses and those were three disorderly conducts, three other offenses, one offense nonviolent involving family, and one driving under the influence offense. This was a 14% decrease in Group B offenses in comparison with March. During the month, we made 12 criminal apprehensions and we're, and we are reporting that there was no opioid overdoses this previous month, in the month of April as well. And that will be the police department's report. Anybody have any questions?
Chief, I just want to take a moment, just thank you very much for, for you and your officers. I know it's a busy time and we appreciate your service and, you know, hopefully you guys are getting some rest. So we thank you for that. Those, those 15 bags of lawn bags, holy smokes.
Yes. They, they get transported by the Carroll County Sheriff's Office down to the Drug Enforcement Administration. That's where they're destroyed and everything.
Yeah. That's, that's amazing. And, and thank you for just re-pointing out that you don't have to wait for an event. You can just bring your stuff, your expired drugs, I say drugs, medications or drugs, I don't care, down to the police department at any point. You don't have to wait for April 23rd.
Correct. Correct. And there's a number on the door. If it happens to be at the time the station's not directly open, there's always an officer on duty. You can call the number on the door and the officer will respond right to the station, take them and we'll just drop them in the, in the mailbox that's in the lobby.
Awesome. Council members?
Well, just to echo the same comments, Chief, thank you for all you do for the town. I know you're supporting our Main Street Safety Task Force, so appreciate the extra time you're spending on that. We partnered with the MAPD on the Drug Takeback Day, the Recycle and Sanitation Commission. So that always works well and you always give us good support. So thank you.
We actually, we applaud your participation as well because with the volunteers there, it's a big help for us as well.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to echo everyone's, hold on, Jesus. Barney walks away from me during a budget hearing and now the chief's walked away during a council. I'm feeling not loved here.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you.
At least you get a chance to talk.
Oh, that's true. I do get a chance to talk.
I got it. You're next.
We got a joke right now. Hey, I know, thank you for all the work that you and your officers do. And I was amazed by the 15 bags of drugs or medications to take back. Also would like to say that I like you to indicate that, I like that you indicate that it doesn't have to be a Drug Takeback Day to do it because even the department environment is not recommending to dump it or dispose of it down the drains because it is affecting the fish, the frogs and stuff in the streams. We don't really want Frank and Fish in Mount Airy to make the news. So thank you.
You're amazing, Doug. Sorry, guys. That's awesome. I just want to say thank you and then I'd like to pass it over to the mayor.
Thanks, Lynn. The only thing I want to do was, was make sure that we address the APFO and the comment that was brought up. Currently have nine officers.
Correct. Correct. Nine, we do have one right now that's off on extended family sick leave. He just had in addition to the family, so he's taken a couple weeks off to enjoy his new child. So we're, we're making do right now with, we still have nine, but right now we're using, we have eight officers counting myself. But that's only short term and then we're in the process of hiring two more.
So we got two more coming and that's what we're budgeted for is 11. Our APFO is actually 1.1 per 1,000 residents. Okay? So if a heavy development comes in with over 1,000 people, which is what's being proposed right now, it could trip the trigger for hiring number 12 and possibly even number 13, depending on the density. So, but that's where we're at. We have nine officers hired, two are being interviewed and, and provided the budget goes through, that's, that's the way it'll stand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into our Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Report with Bruce Walsh. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. For the month of April, rescue calls, 102 in Carroll, 50 in Frederick, three in Howard, and five in Montgomery for a total of 160 calls. Fire calls, we had eight in Carroll, four in Frederick, three in Howard, five in Montgomery for a total of 20 fire calls, which resulted in 110 calls for service in Carroll, 54 in Frederick, six in Howard, and 10 in Montgomery for 180 calls for the month. There will be a fire company sponsored blood drive at the reception hall on May 23rd. Information will be posted as for the number to call to make your reservations for that. And also the auxiliary will be having a second dinner this month on the 20th and June 5th will be our next drive-through chicken barbecue. And the entertainment is out for, list is out for the carnival, so, and again, that is the first week of August this year. So please check that out and come out every night.
Awesome.
Any questions, Carl?
No.
Okay.
I'm good, as long as you don't walk, walk away from me when I ask you questions. Okay? All right. I'm fine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I got nothing.
Okay. Thank you. That was the last joke for that one. All right. Next up is the Civil Air Patrol Report with Captain Rolfe.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Council members. This is our report for the month of April. Under mission significant activities, we did not have any assigned missions during the reporting period. For our community support, 16 members of the squadron provided support to the Maryland Air National Guard by manning their dining facility as part of a longstanding agreement we have between the Air National Guard and the Maryland Wing. Under qualifications and achievements, two of our members received CAP achievement awards in recognition of their support to visiting CAP units that actually came in from all over the country for the Cyber Patriot National Competition that occurred last month. So they've been training, 22 of our members completed their CPR certification and our ground team members and trainees have conducted preparations for an upcoming exercise. Two of our cadets completed their first orientation flight. This is an opportunity for teenagers to literally fly an aircraft once it's off the ground, which is a great opportunity for our cadets. We had one new cadet join the squadron last month and our squadron, squadron ground team remains fully mission capable and ready to respond as required. On the horizon, the squadron is still planning an open house on the 21st of May. That'll be from 11 to 3 p.m. at the Isaac Walton League Reservation. This is an opportunity for members of the community or anyone else that is interested in Civil Air Patrol to come out, see a little bit about what we do, find out how to join if they're interested. Squadron is also supporting a wing-level search and rescue exercise that is occurring in two weeks. Several of our members are also scheduled to attend a community emergency response team basic training, which will actually improve our overall squadron capabilities to support the town and community. Finally, the Maryland Wing is, is providing Bay Patrol mission support where our aircraft are flying missions over the bay in support of the Coast Guard and any kind of situations that require immediate rescue or intervention. Our squadron members will participate as aircrew and mission-based radio operators during those missions. Pending your questions, especially from the mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Oh, that was sharp, Captain. Oh, that was sharp, Captain.
You said it was your last joke, it wasn't mine.
May 21st, the open house?
Yes, sir.
Just to follow on the mayor's question, the open house, I went to, I believe last year was, you do offer a variety of scheduled activities during the open house also?
Right, we try and showcase a little bit of everything that we do, whether that's on the cadet program side of the house, some of our STEM aerospace education, and certainly our emergency services and community support activities.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain, I appreciate it. All right, council members, we'll go into new business. We'll begin with the road closure. This is for the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Parade Route. This takes place on Thursday, August 4th. Ashley Collier has provided you with the State Highway Administration paperwork as well as the, with the route. Pending any questions or concerns, maybe the mayor could answer those since staff is not here. Not seeing any. I'll make a motion that we approve this road closure. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Munder. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next thing on the agenda is the Windy Ridge Trail. This was going to be presented by Councilmember Reed. She has asked for its removal from tonight's agenda. I will make a motion that this item be removed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Councilwoman Reed, seconds. So until I hear further. This takes us into the Green Tree Mixed Use Community Commercial Pre-Concept Sketch Plan. This is up for approval. I see developers are here. This is being presented by John. John, do you just want to go over what we have in front of us, please?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Can you just make sure your mic's on, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
So again, this is a pre-concept sketch for the Green Tree property, which is located on the north end of town, the intersection of Main Street and Candace Drive and Route 27. The memo attached basically goes through the steps of how the plan got to you tonight. Again, the planning commission held a public sureet on February 14th. A public hearing was held also on March 14th. Then we had a planning commission and town council workshop on March 22nd and then a joint planning commission town council public hearing was held on April the 4th. The next step in the MXUCC process would be for the approval for the plan to move through the next stage, which would be a concept plan submission and the submission of the pattern book along with all the adequate documentation for APFO requirements, et cetera, water allocation. And the engineer is here on his presence, so if you have any additional questions for him related to the project, now would be the time.
Okay. I just want to, before I begin, I just want to have a little bit of a discussion about, I guess maybe the history of this property and its clarification. There was a resident earlier that mentioned that this property has been spoken about for quite a number of years and so far, so far back, the latest or earliest that I could find this was 1998 when the property first came to the town. And using our minute search on our website, which was very good, I continued to find minutes and hearings coming forth and the zoning applications being presented, 2002, 2004, 2008, and that continued on for a number of years until here we are from just recently with the Green Tree Development. So this property is certainly not the first. It does require a little bit of research to figure out, you know, exactly how long this town has been talking about this property. The property, I do want to just clarify, there might be some misnomers, as well as myself, that the property number of houses or townhouses has dwindled in size. There was records of showing, I believe, a number around 112. That number has certainly changed until I actually zoomed in and started counting all the boxes. And when I counted all those boxes up there, I came up with a number of 70. And that is the latest number or the latest plan that I was able to find online. So that's where I believe we are at right now is 70 townhomes. You can see the map up there. Thank you, John, for pulling that up. A few residents during public comment had some concerns with the access to community commercial with it coming off of Candace Drive and the open space playground, which is in the middle at the bottom right there. Several other residents mentioned open space that is unusable. And that is, that is in regards, that is accurate. The way that it is written in our code, however, is anything that, whether it's usable or unusable, is still considered open space. And that's not something that I'm changing, that's the way that it is. It would remain the way currently unless the developer needed to run drainage or sewer or water lines from that existing property. That would be the only reason for the change. However, according to all of their requirements for the town, currently they do meet all of the requirements that the town has put forth on this property. Those are all of my comments and hopefully I've addressed some of them for the public that have spoken this evening. So I'll open this up to council members at this time.
All right, thank you very much. No questions, but just some observations. And I want people to understand what's behind my thought process when I'm evaluating this development. So per our code, it says the pre-concept sketch layout plan and pattern book shall be evaluated based on the purpose and objectives of the mixed use development as outlined in Section 112-39.1A and B, or as applicable, the mixed use district as outlined in 112-37.2. And so when I read this requirement and how I am to evaluate this pre-concept plan, I interpret that as I can be very qualitative, so to speak, in looking at the stated objectives and purpose for a mixed use development per our code. And I can make a judgment if this development is meeting those objectives. And so when you look at the objectives for mixed use development, it talks about things like providing an enhanced development that provides features, walkability, enhancements that could not be gotten by the traditional zoning classifications alone. And so where I'm coming from is I still look at this development and you've made some really good progress. You're trying to work with the number of units, dwellings per acre kind of a thing. But I still look at this and I don't see a development that's worthy of the citizens of Mount Airy. I don't see something that's showing the spirit and the objectives of an enhanced development that brings out all the objectives and purpose attributes of our ordinance. And so I would like you to go back and continue to work this with a goal of, per some of the citizen comments earlier, looking at the style and the types of dwellings, these are townhouses. Do they really fit within the surrounding community? That's one of the attributes that's in the ordinance. Does this development complement the surrounding environment, existing community? I still think there are too many units. I understand you have met the technical specifications for open space, but common sense tells you that in terms of usable open space, there's not a whole lot of open space in this development for children, for families. There are no walking pathways, there's no integrated way to get to the commercial district and back. It really kind of looks like a cookie cutter set of townhomes with a commercial building off to the side. So I think you can be more creative. I think you can address the enhanced attributes that are called for in our ordinance. And you don't have enough usable open space and you've heard all those comments from the citizens. So that's where I'm coming from and I would not approve this plan at this time this evening if we continue to go up for a vote. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to follow a little bit on Councilman Demoto's comments here too, but I would like to start off with a note to the community of Mount Airy on this. First, I would like to say, over the years, as Council President Porgas says, this has been 20-plus years in one form or another. And when it originally started, this has been a true reduction in homes. It has gotten better over time. So I applaud the designer and the owner of the property that they are, they have listened to comments over time and have shrunk it. But I would like to also review and read this comment to start off my discussion here. The review and approval of this or any other MXD or MXUCC pre-concept plan is highly subjective by the person reviewing the plan. So I attempted to apply what is set forth in Town Code sections that Councilman Demoto just mentioned, 112-39.1, which is for the MXUCC, I believe it is, I'll get to it later. But there are two specific sections in that that you need to apply for when reviewing the pre-concept. I would also like to mention to the citizens of Mount Airy that this zone is an MXUCC is a special exception. And with conversations with the town attorney, just general conversations, that the special exception on this goes up in September. That does not mean that this dies or anything else, that it means that if it's not reapplied for and/or approved by the Board of Appeals, it reverts back to the community commercial zoning. So if you look at that, the community commercial zoning is a far less desirable, in my view, for this part of town. So now I will start off with what Councilman Demoto says that in Town Code 98-61 Part D indicates the pre-concept sketch layout plan and pattern book shall be evaluated based on the purpose and objectives of the mixed use development as outlined in Sections 112-39.1A and B, that is for the MXUCC. And then for any related review for mixed use district is section, code Section 112-37-2. So I will start off for the, with the MXU, which is 112-39.1A. This states off of the purpose and I have, it's hard to apply the statement of purpose for the approval of the pre-concept since it is really dependent on how a person applies the objectives to the approval process. So we'll read off the objectives based on what the objective is and my viewpoint on it. Objective 1 under B is provide a more attractive residential and non-residential environment than would be possible through the strict application of conventional zoning district requirements. To me, as the pre-concept plan is currently drawn, does not meet this objective since in my opinion is just an application of RS7 townhouse zoning and the community commercial or limited commercial districts under the classification of MXUCC. This, it does not provide, thus, it does not provide a more attractive residential or non-residential environment than what would be achieved under strict application of the previously mentioned zoning classifications. Objective 2 is encourage harmonious and coordinated development of sites that is consistent with the existing natural features, bicycles, pedestrian and vehicle, whatever, vehicle travel, circulation patterns, and capability with surrounded uses. For some of this is difficult to make a judgment about the criteria of harmonious and coordinated development since most of the information to make that determination is what I would consider is normally presented in a more detailed development drawings, which is not part of the pre-concept phase of approval. While an argument could be made that what is proposed, what is proposed, the compatibility of what's with surrounding uses, since the proposal includes, oh, whatever, hold on, small commercial component. Okay, okay, there we go. What is proposed may be compatible with surrounding uses since the proposal includes a singular residential housing type and a small commercial component. The proposed type of residential unit, in my view, is not compatible with the surrounding residential units since the surrounding uses are primarily single-family homes, while what is being proposed is all townhomes. A mix of townhomes in some form or detached, semi-detached, single-family homes would be a more compatible housing type mix with the surrounding housing types. And to address the lack of onsite open space for use, while the plan does indicate a small onsite playground, the development must have a larger multi-use public gathering area for community events or recreation by residents. While there are several neighborhood non-residential uses in close proximity to this parcel, aka churches, they are of low impact to the surrounding communities. This is more leaning towards a commercial development aspect of it. The proposed commercial component may not be compatible with the current surrounding uses due to the lack of similar commercial use in close proximity to the parcel. In my opinion, a more compatible use for the portion of the parcel being proposed for commercial use would be a public building for the MAPD, which is allowed under, as a special exception, I believe, is MXUCC. This would be a much lower impact to surrounding land uses and would fit the area better since most of the non-commercial uses in the area are, I would say, community-based, which is the thing. And as a general note, while I understand why the alleyways were included in the proposed drawings, I'm concerned that this would create a high HOA fee for any residents in the community and may cause problems for the town later if the features such as the alleyways are not well-maintained and there would be requests by residents for the town to make, to take ownership of them, which we could not via our current code. Also, when developments of this nature have been built in other areas and there is a lack of viable usable community space, the alleyways become the play areas and tensions rise in the community and the residents look toward the local government for solutions, which at this time we cannot offer them. So that kind of works with the harmonious development within and cohesive development. Objective 3 would be encourage development that is of excellent design and architecture with a mix of uses that will create synergy, efficiency of design, and a reduction of vehicle miles traveled. Again, this is difficult to make a determination based on this objective because of excellent design and architecture, since these elements would be more likely be handled. be more likely be handled during the pattern book phase of the development or the approval process. Due to the location of this parcel in relation to the other commercial areas of town, providing daily goods and services, any residents living in the proposed development would still need to travel to obtain those goods and services. So there would not be a reduction in miles traveled. So it does not meet that objective in my viewpoint. Objective 4 is create a mixture of office, retail, recreational, and residential uses along with restaurants, eateries, and cafes, where all related structures, parking, and I stress this, open spaces, are designed to establish and maintain a cohesive community while protecting the character of surrounding neighborhoods. While the argument could also be made on this point, that what is being proposed does meet some of the objectives of the MXUCC, what is being proposed, in my opinion, falls short on the open space requirements that would maintain a cohesive community while protecting the character of surrounding neighborhoods. As previously mentioned, if there's a lack of viable open space field for recreational use by the community residents, which is in this, which is not being offered in this plan, that this could potentially lead children of the neighborhood playing in the alleyways and streets and thus putting them in danger for injury and causing tension among community residents. So it would not provide for a cohesive community. While the lack, with the lack of viable play areas within the community and public options limited in the area, there is, I believe was mentioned also, there is a potential for an increase of use of private HOA-owned facilities in close proximity to the development, which would hinder the cohesiveness of the community and may have a negative impact of the character of surrounding neighborhoods. And as living in a community that would be potentially affected by residents coming down and believing our HOA community is public property, it is not. It is private, community-owned property that we pay HOA fees on. So while we do look at time to time, coming and playing, okay, fine, but if there's a severe uptick in use of our property, the residents of the community take that into account with potentially higher HOA fees, lawsuits, insurance, and by right, we could have them chased off the property, which I don't believe anyone in our community wants that, because that would not be cohesive community and proper Mount Airy behavior amongst residents. Number five is expand the opportunity to support diversified housing options within an integrated site design of varying land uses. In my opinion, the proposed site plan does not fulfill this objective, since it is only offering a singular residential housing option within the site. As I've mentioned earlier, a better design would include housing options, offering first-floor master suite options, AKA villas or homes, single-family homes, with aging, which could offer aging-in-place to occur for people that move there or for people within the community that choose to downsize. And also, first-floor living options would allow, I mean, would allow people that would have, be disabled or could not handle steps for either being disabled or medical reasons to come to Mount Airy and live within this town. Because if you look around right now, all the housing options within this town are primarily second-story or stair-based living. So as Councilman DeMoto indicated, this is a good start, and I would hope that they take consideration of what is being said here tonight and bring back a version 2.0, per se. And that, as indicated earlier, instead of taking away the 10 houses by the playground, maybe just take away the four closest, that would allow at least a field space, that would allow for community gatherings and soccer, and maybe keep, not keep, but offer more onsite recreational ability out of sight, out of mind, and safer for the kids than playing in the street. And for that, if it was presented currently for a vote tonight, I could not support this pre-concept plan. Thank you.
Councilwoman Galetti.
Yeah, I was going to go back this way. I'm sorry, I'm used to going last and then I was going to pass it to the mayor. I'm used to going at 10 o'clock at night. A lot of comments from the public, and I thank them for coming out, and I hope that, and I believe they're being listened to by the developer. I had heard some good ideas tonight about, and I don't know the economics of it, because I don't have the detail of your economics, but that 10 going out and possibly putting a playground there in a community area there. Someone also made a comment of move the commercial over, move the playground in that corner. I don't know if I'd be comfortable having my kids at a playground at Main Street in Candace. I'm not sure about that idea, but it's a good idea. I don't know if that's feasible, if it's something you can think about to come back in, or possibly those four. I also had a resident contact me, actually stopped me in the store somewhere I was with my family, and said they wondered if, looking at this, I think a lot of the pushback is it's a new concept, it's kind of a Montgomery County concept that we clearly don't want here, no matter what people are saying about me. I don't want that here. The back-to-back with the alleyways, I've had people, I had a couple people say, going along with what the other council members have said, as far as the harmonious and kind of fitting in with what we have in town, Twin Arch Crossing has townhouses. And I've had people just ask me, is there any way, instead of doing these back-loading alley ones, if you could reconfigure them, something similar to what we already have in town, like Twin Arch Crossing with those townhouses in that area? I don't know how that would affect your numbers in your plan, but those are just the comments I have that I've heard from the public. And we do want to listen to the public, and we do listen to the public, and we are representing the public, we are part of the public tax-paying citizens of the town. So with that in mind, those were my comments to support some of what the residents have said. If you can make it for more palatable for them to look at, those were just the comments I heard that I wanted to pass on.
So I am actually going to probably say the opposite of what everyone else said. I think the back alley concept plan is actually unique to our area and the type of housing that attracts young professionals and young families. So I like that concept. Again, we don't have anything like this in Mount Airy. A townhome community kind of on the north end of Main Street, in my opinion, is not sort of that Montgomery County feel, but it is a unique style, meaning, do we really just want to pick up Twin Arch Crossing and plop it on North Main Street? Or do we want to add something different to the area? The other thing I want to mention is, this plan is already 40% reduced from what was originally proposed. So it's already been dialed back 40%. I would like to see some walking trails, you know, when you guys get to the concept and the pattern book, if that's possible. But this currently does meet Town Code and MXUCC. So I am personally okay taking you to the next stage to get to the concept plan and get to the pattern book plan. I don't, at this point, that doesn't mean that development happens in a week. It just gets them to the next stage so that we can dial into it deeper and see what really is happening in there. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Galetti, I was just trying to give you a chance so you weren't always going last. Yeah, sorry. So I have a, I have a couple concerns, and I'm going to be a lot less technical than my counterparts to my left. I'm not going to read any code numbers or anything like that, and I'm just going to speak as a resident, what I've heard from other residents that have shared concerns. In talking to some of the residents, one of my main concerns is usable open space and the playground that is currently there, I don't believe, in my opinion, will support the residents that are there. If you are taking a look at all of the other residential developments that are in this town, they have larger play areas, or they are next to a town park that promotes playability. This, I believe, this plan currently, the way that it sits, does not promote that. And I would think that if you are trying to drive younger families into this town, one of your, one of your best-selling features to combat the commercial property that is tied to the residential would be to highlight the open space, the usable open space, the playground that would, that's there. That should be a selling feature, and I don't believe the way that this is planned out supports that proposal. And as I mentioned earlier, this, this development has undergone, since 1998, a number of changes. First, it was just going to be senior, quote-unquote, or aged appropriate housing. I think this is a much better option, and I've heard other former council members say that this is a better option than the community commercial. And I think residents just need to, I guess, take that into consideration when you're looking at the options here versus they're not going to put several commercial buildings or a strip of buildings there for commercial properties. I think, and I'm not trying to sway anybody, I think it's just something that you really have to think about before you go talking about and sharing your opinions about a property. You have to think of, well, they have been granted a special exemption, and the alternative is commercial. And thinking about promoting Mount Airy, I think this is a better option. I don't think that this is the plan for that option. As I mentioned, open space, I think in order to achieve the open space, I think you're going to have to eliminate a few more of those townhomes. Councilmembers brought up some good points about the alley, where kids are going to have to play, and I don't, I don't think those are viable options either. So I think you need a selling point. I think you missed the selling point to try and bring families in. Yes, one of the selling points is Mount Airy. Yes, one of the selling points is our schools. Yes, one of the selling points is living in the town. But in order for me to purchase one of those houses for my three kids, I would need them to play somewhere, and right now, that's not, that's not good enough for me. So those are just, those are just some of my comments.
Thank you very much, Council President. Yeah, I tend to lean that direction as well, although I won't be voting tonight. So what I'll do is focus on logistics. When we created MXD, we created the requirement for that pre-concept sketch plan to come through the council for approval, because these are the people who are elected by the citizens. And so they have to do their due diligence on this concept plan and answer to what happens. This is the council's only chance to look at this. They're going to look at this pre-concept sketch plan, and once it leaves this table, everything else, all the APFO requirements and all of that gets approved, and I'm willing to be wrong, if somebody wants to tell me that I'm wrong, but everything else goes through the planning commission. This is the only time that the council is going to see this plan. So you need, need to get it right, okay? The other thing is, if this goes commercial, if it were to revert back to commercial, then it never sees the town council. Everything runs through the planning commission, and this town council will just sit there and have to watch it happen. So that's a reason to try to get something up here that works. The other reason to get something up here that works is if we do go, end up reverting back to commercial, there is no open space requirement, okay? So another reason to try to figure out how to get this into something that works. And the last thing, because I'm kind of sensing the direction that this is going to go, if this does not pass the council tonight, I'm looking at the town attorney, does it go back to a workshop? Where do we go from here if this doesn't make it through the council?
Well, I think the process is envisioned that it would come back and workshop, presumably with a revised plan that, in accordance with what you've advised, you would look favorably on. I think they certainly are given that opportunity. I'm not suggesting those are, that is the sum and substance of their legal recourse. I'm not going to advise them, they'll have good people to advise them. But that's a long way of saying, yes, you're absolutely right. It should be opportunity for them to revise the plan and come back.
Yeah. And I sent an email out earlier today to the council president and town attorney and a couple of the staff members, and what I want to make sure that we don't do is end up layering meetings where we confuse the residents of the town, the citizens. So what I would like to have happen is, if this gets rejected and we have to have a workshop, I want to solidate on a workshop that is going to give us the amount of lead time so that the staff is able to send those letters out, and we don't try to rush this thing through and start anticipating the next meetings. We should go meeting by meeting. If there's a workshop, we schedule the workshop. If we go to that workshop and the workshop ends up needing another workshop, then we go through the drill again, and we have adequate time to notify the residents of the next workshop. So I just don't want anything overlapping anymore, because I think we've kind of done ourselves a disservice, only because this is a new type of zoning, so we all stumbled a little bit, and I'm willing to, you know, shoulder the burden, but no more overlapping meetings, please. So, thank you.
No problem. So this is up for approval. Is there a motion on the, from the council to approve this pre-concept sketch plan? Is there a motion to approve this pre-concept sketch plan? There is no approval, or, excuse me, there is no motion to approve this pre-concept sketch plan, so it will not move forward here going to planning. And hopefully, the developers take some of those comments into consideration. Thank you. We'll move into recommendation of award for Prospect Road Water Main Replacement. This is going to be presented by Barney Quinn. Can someone hit the lights while you're walking by, please? I appreciate it, thank you. Wait, we can wait a minute.
Prospect Road Water Main Replacement, we brought this to you before. You did approve it as an extension of the Center Street Water Main project with the same contractor. It didn't work out, I'd just say, numbers-wise, because the materials just kept going up and up. They didn't want to, you know, they couldn't honor it, really. So we rebid it, and... So, uh, we rebid it and, uh, we had five bidders that, uh, bid on this and, uh, so we had, you know, some, some good bids there. Um, and the best price came in from Bright Construction Group. Uh, the amount of nine, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I think last time we were asking for, just give a comparison, I think we were asking for a hundred and sixty-five thousand, if I remember correctly. Um, so it's, it's a little bit more than, uh, what you approved last time.
Um, are you done?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, the, the previous contractor that we had, did they start or do any work when they started to increase their prices? Or was it before they started doing work, they realized that the prices, the, the amount that they had originally budgeted for was not going to work?
So I, just in the course of, you know, while working on Center Street, um, you know, prices were going up on them. Um, um, you know, they probably didn't make as much as they wanted to on that project. And when it came to here, I mean, prices still haven't stopped going up. So, uh, it was just, i- i- this would be a change order and, and they, they just can't, um, you know, uh, add to that, so that's.
Okay, so this is to finish the work, some of the work that the previous contractor had already started or, no, this?
They had not done anything for Prospect Road.
Okay.
Again, it was just Center Street. Uh, we were trying, it's basically the same project.
Okay.
Doing water main, uh, replacements and it's only two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
Um, again, uh, this is kinda in conjunction with the brewery that's coming in and us, uh, needing to widen the road. This is just getting the water line, uh, done and out of the way, just for that section.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions or comments? All right, seen, go ahead.
Sorry, quick question. Bright Construction Group, have we used them before for anything?
We have not.
Okay. Are they, I looked online, are they the ones out of Virginia or, okay?
Yes, yeah, a- and they, they have extensive experience. I, I've called, uh, their references and, and everybody just, you know, they applaud them, so, I mean, everybody I've talked to.
Okay, comfortable with award, okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, so town staff, uh, recommends to the council to approve the Prospect Road Water Main Replacement Contract in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, sorry, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to Bright Construction Group, uh, using the available ARPA funds. I'll make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Demoter seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next up is recommendation of award for paving of East West Parking Lot. Barney, and this is also you. It is.
It i- it is. I'll bring it closer, though. Uh, East West Paving, um, we put this out for bid, uh, to pave the parking lot at East West Park. Um, from numbers we had seen recently, um, we were expecting with the ninety thousand that we have, uh, available, we were not gonna be able to finish it. So we broke it into two phases. Uh, prices came in, actually the low, low bidder came in within that range. So, uh, this is, um, anticipated to approve or, you know, recommended to approve award for both phases, meaning the entire parking lot. Um, and that's kinda paving up to each of the gates. Um, and, and all the parking, which would give us, I think it was forty-one or forty-two parking spaces.
Will, will this paving also include striping as well?
It'd be the striping as well, correct.
Awesome.
Including two handicap spots with signs and.
Perfect.
The, the area, when you, when you drive into East West Park, that, it's dirt now.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's mostly stone.
Yeah.
But as soon as you get to the bottom of that ramp, um, there's a little bit off to the right. It goes to the new pond, um, some goes to, you know, goes over, um.
To the trail.
Driveway to the Wendy Ridge Trail, driveway to the, um,
Baseball.
Up to the gate, go into the ball field. And then you have the other one that goes up towards the storm ponds.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, town staff recommends to the council to approve, uh, warding of both phases for the East West, uh, paving project to MT Laney Company Incorporated in the amount of eighty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Demoter seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next up is recommendation of award for West Ridge Storm Water Pond Improvements. Barney, go ahead.
Uh, West Ridge, um, so, um, if you remember, you, you approved a budget amendment for a hundred and twenty thousand back, um, uh, in the fall. And, uh, we're working on several of those ponds that, that we were, um, given orders by the county that we need to repair. Uh, this is one of the larger of the four that, um, needed a separate design. And, um, so this is the first of four. There'd be three more coming similar to this. Um, uh, but the other seven ponds that are being repaired, they're much smaller. Um, that's already, um, getting started. Uh, so West Ridge, uh, is a pond that stays wet all the time. It's all the way up to the top of the weir wall just about all the time and there's a lot of erosion on the outfall. Uh, this will help drain the pond slowly and, um, uh, take care of all that, um, uh, all that erosion problem, re- regrade everything. So, uh, we, we bid this out, uh, we ended up with six bids, uh, with the lowest bid coming from White Pine Construction uh, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay. Um, and once, uh, once the management has been taken care of, will this go back to staying a wet pond?
No, I think the idea is that it'll.
It'll drain.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay, 'cause I know that we put into the budget those fountains. And I wasn't sure if this was one of them that was gonna re- perfect, all right. I was just asking.
You stole my question, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Perfect. Town staff recommends to the town council to approve awarding, uh, the West Ridge Storm Water Management Pond Improvements Project to White Pine Construction Corporation in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Demoter seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I forgot to say aye, aye. Not nay. Sorry. All right, next up is the memorandum agreement for acquisition of the parking lot north of Prospect Road and intersections, um, improvement. And this is from John.
Yeah, so this is basically the agreement between the town and the owner of the parking lot to the north side of, um, the up and coming brewery. And this is a transfer of ownership. They're basically working with the town, uh, with the engineer and creating a, um, a, a redesign of Prospect and Main Street, uh, which will accommodate a dedicated left and right-hand turn and a wider access off of Main onto Prospect. Um, this is the transfer of his rights and ownership of that property into town ownership, uh, with the understanding of these other hurdles that he's already overcome with the, um, the development of the brewery along with the, the, the new designs of the, uh, Prospect Road Intersection at Main Street.
Perfect. And, um, I just have one question. I know, um, that prop- that parking lot had been used with a, with a lot of cars that were in disrepair. Um, however, I know the plumery truck sorta still remains there. Is that the intention or are we going to speak to the owners to, um, have that truck removed so that we can, um, use the full parking spot? Parking lot?
I'm sure once we have ownership of the property.
Okay.
Then we can enforce that type of removal.
Okay.
I'm not.
If it's a tag, if it's a tag, it's a, it's a tagged vehicle that's in non-disrepair, then they have a right to park their truck on their parking lot, public parking.
The way that it's parked now does not?
Just, no, it's on an angle, exactly.
All right.
Yeah, I would, I, I think it actually violates the sign ord- sign ordinance, doesn't it? You're not supposed to.
I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna go there on that one, pal. It was a long discussion.
Right, my opinion, the point is, so the current property owner allows that, you know, allows that business to park the truck there. I would say once we take ownership of it, it's up to our discretion to say.
Okay.
Gotta move on.
I just wanted to get clarification. Any other comments or, uh, questions?
I just wanna make two comments. Uh, one, I believe, uh, the town attorney has something to add on this. And also, I just wanna point out to everybody's attention, so we can't say we weren't aware of it. On page two of ten, it does list a potential cost of the intersection improvements of approximately three hundred thousand. So I just wanna make sure that we're aware of that and we can't come back and say, well, it's in there, we were never told. But I believe the town attorney might have some.
Can I ask a question real quick too, 'cause it might have to do with.
Oh, that's.
Say, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Um, on page two, I, I do notice that estimate the cost of design of the improvements to the intersection will be sixty thousand dollars and that is no- North Eight, Number Eight Main is paying that?
That's correct.
Okay, so sixty grand, they're gonna pay, they're gonna convey us this property. Set value's about a hundred and forty. We already know, you're talking, uh, Carl, about the three hundred thousand to improve the intersection, which we've already had discussions about that, to fix this failing intersection the last couple of years I know on streets and roads, okay? And then whereas the last one, number, Number Eight Main is agreeable to paying the cost of the engineering design of the improvements. So they're, they're putting in, not only conveying the property, I wanna make sure I have it clear, they're putting in money to do that for us to improve this failing intersection. Not, I don't want the public to think this is just being fixed 'cause a brewery is going in.
Yeah.
'Cause Streets and Roads has been talking about this failing intersection for a couple of years. And as we know, we've said before, that was on the top of our list for ARPA money when we thought we could fix things and we found out we couldn't 'cause we had to go under. So I just wanna point out a couple of things there that, that part, to add to what you added.
It's on the traffic study as well, so.
Yeah.
Um, Tom?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, uh, I did, at about three forty-eight today, get a email from Mr. Scranton, uh, the principal for, uh, Number Eight Main Street and VSP, um, to say that he still has concerns relative to the timing of approvals and permits for this work being tied to final site plan approval and UNO for the brewery. I'm not sure he's reading this correctly, but, uh, otherwise it looks good. So here's my suggestion is to have a vote on what you have in front of you. That's really all you can do at this point. I was hopeful he might be here to explain what that meant and what his counterproposal would be. Obviously, he's not and I don't have that, so. My suggestion would be to vote on what you have in front of you. That's really all you can go by. If he has changes, then it'll ha- he'll have to wait a month, you know, a month and we'll be back with whatever those might be. Um, hopefully he won't. Hopefully I can, us, you know, calm his concerns.
Are those concerns, um, coming from, like, licensing or permitting?
Well, so I think his concerns are based upon, uh, the final approved site development plan for the parcel and also, uh, uh, tied to the UNO of the, uh, brewery. Um, I think that's really his concerns. Uh, and he, he did have a prior engagement that he was unable to attend tonight. But I think as Tom's, uh, conveying is that there's are items that we can address at a later time and shouldn't really impact this. We can, if it has to come back to the town council, so be it.
And I'm not sure he's reading it correctly, that these things are tied to final approval. Quite the opposite. What this does is allow him to proceed with his development plan, his site plan, despite the intersection being currently a failing intersection. Because he's going to be dealing us, and, uh, a property that in part can be used to widen and improve and make it a non-failing intersection. In part because he's agreeing to pay for the, essentially the design costs associated with those. So, I think he's probably misreading this, but anyway, I, my suggestion would be to vote on what you have in front of you. And then we'll see what his issues may be.
And in that same, um, um, sentence, uh, the site plan was taken to planning commission and approved for the exterior improvement. So the site development plan for Eight North Main has been approved by the planning commission already, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the memorandum of agreement the way that it's written in front of us tonight um, for the acquisition of the parking lot north of Prospect Road and intersection, intersection improvements. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Reed seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is to reschedule the July town council meeting from July fourth. We'll just go to the following Monday. The, um, next town coun- or, excuse me, the July, um, town council meeting will now be on July eleventh at, uh, seven thirty, barring any public hearings. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next up is Charter Amendment Workshops. Um, we pushed off that one and we need to pick a date since now we're all done with our budget hearing process. Is there, I'm just gonna throw out a date first, since it works for me and I apologize, I'm not being stubborn. Um, May twenty-third, which is the fourth Monday, does anything happen in this?
No, the only thing that happens that entire week is EDC.
Okay, the only thing I have to say is planning commission's been rescheduled to the twenty-third because the thirtieth is Memorial. Not Memorial.
Right.
Yeah, Memorial, yeah.
All right, how about the third, the third Monday, the sixteenth?
I wanna be in the country, but I'll be out of the country.
What an excuse.
I think I'm working that day.
The twenty-fourth?
I mean, I don't think there's any commissions, anything scheduled that day. That's just, I mean, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth?
That's the fourth Thursday, Tuesday.
For the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth, there are no me- commission meetings.
Um, twenty-sixth I'm good, twenty-fourth I'm not.
Twenty-sixth?
Yes.
I can, um, I can chime in, uh, via phone. If we do the twenty-fourth, the twenty-sixth, I'm definitely out 'cause I have to work. But I'm o- I'm okay with calling in.
On the twenty-fourth?
On the twenty-fourth, as long as someone's here to help collect ideas. Council Secretary Reed.
Did you say twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth?
Um, let's do the twenty-fourth then.
I can't.
Oh, you cannot?
Right, I'm, I'm.
I apologize, I thought you.
That's okay, I'm working twenty-second through the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
But I do have, um, the, like, the thirty-first off.
Streets and Roads.
Oh, yeah.
And that morning, you and I will hopefully be at McDaniel for graduation, don't forget.
Okay.
I want next week, the ninth or the thirteenth.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a busy, huh, what, the May ninth? I know the twelfth, no, no, hold on.
Board of Appeals meets on the tenth.
Thank you.
Anything on the ninth?
I'm, I'm working, sorry. I'm, I'm unavailable. Nine, ten, eleven. On the ninth.
Hey, go to June.
Twelfth?
Are you in June now?
Yes.
E.
Oh.
Um.
The weekend thirteenth, we are at NML.
Yeah.
Um, Tuesday, the seventh?
Why, hold on, yeah, okay.
That I can probably schedule for.
Tuesdays, the, the June seventh? Councilmember Demoter?
That works for me, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, what time?
Um, how about?
Six thirty, seven?
I can do six thirty. And I'll call in that day as well.
Okay, perfect.
If we can, um, just update the website, six thirty on June seventh for Charter Amendment. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. All right, next up, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, commission appointment. All right, next up, Mr. Mayor, commission appointments and reappointments?
Tonight, I am recommending, they're all Mount Airy Sustainability Commission, Marybeth Worthington, Don Neary, and Kelly Neff be reappointed to the Mount Airy Sustainability Commission.
All right. That we can do this as a group, I have a feeling. All those in favor of the reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, next up is we move into ordinances and resolutions. Annexation Resolution Number Forty-four, regular property. There's a note on here to be voted at the June sixth town council meeting. Is this for reintroduction so that we can vote on, in the June? No, just a public note. Perfect. So public, regular property will be on the June sixth town council agenda for vote.
On that topic, Mr. President, and I can do it in my attorney report, if you prefer, there were a couple of discussion items on this. I needed some direction. And again, I can handle that later if that's okay.
That's fine, yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to B of the alphabet. Charter Amendment Resolution twenty-two-one-two, finance, budgeting, and purchasing. This is for reintroduction and to schedule a public hearing. I will reintroduce, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Munder, seconds, and we'll just schedule this for the, for the next town council. And we'll do seven-ten, and then we'll work backwards.
Do you mind if I make a quick comment on that?
Sure.
We did find, I was talking with, with Mary Van Meter, Town Staff, and we did find something that I will talk to a council member and try to make it, it's a minor amendment, but basically, the way that it's drafted right now, every time somebody has a water leak, they would end up having to come to the town council. So I'm going to make an adjustment for that, and we'll have an amended version that we can present when we go to the vote. Thanks.
And to me, that makes sense, so that won't be a big one. Next up is Ordinance twenty-two-two-five, this is the proposed changes to the Neighborhood Professional District. This is up for adoption. No one spoke at this during the public hearings, and I don't necessarily have any questions, but I'll make a motion, is there a second?
I do have some.
We need to do a motion first.
Very good.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Munder, seconds, go ahead, Councilmember Demoter.
Okay, so, you know, I've been learning a lot over the past year, and especially with our planning commission and how our different zoning classifications are set up and the pros and cons of those. I must say, I am struggling with our zoning schemes and the transition of our zoning schemes. For example, we go from various residential zonings to Neighborhood Professional, Limited Commercial, Commercial. And along the way, there are buffer zones with very specific requirements written into the, into the instructions. And that may have been well-intentioned, but I'm, I'm observing that maybe we are boxing ourselves in and making good, common-sense zoning decisions. So, for example, looking at zoning classifications for other towns, when I looked at Tawney Town, I looked at Manchester, they have much fewer zoning categories and do not specify in law, overly so, any buffer requirements among zoning of adjacent properties. We seem to be much more rigid and have many more transitional zoning categories with very specific zoning buffer requirements. So my rationale is, I understand that on its surface, the value of providing guidance on buffer zone parameters, in theory, to address incompatibilities between two adjacent properties or zone borders that are zoned differently in trying to avoid conflicts between land uses. But I believe that many of the very specific caveats and parameters specified and associated with these zoning classifications are too restrictive. They, in my view, should be used as guidelines and guiding principles rather than codified in law. The assumption of universal zone border compatibility is, in my view, a misguided one, and we should not have too little of a reliance on the different zoning buffer requirements. There is a really good research paper by the American Society of Planners titled "Zoning Buffers: Solution or Panacea." And the article quotes, "It is quite another thing to turn doctrine into dogma and to make a rigid logical system out of what was intended to be a set of guiding principles. A priori reasoning applied to our practical situation runs counter to the prevalent trend in zoning." A priori here, meaning theoretical, pre-arrived at rather than for observation or experience. So I guess what I'm saying is, I just think we're being way too rigid, and we seem to be adding more and more and more very specific requirements into our zoning categories, that when we try and make zoning decisions, we seem to be getting twisted up in knots rather than having the flexibility to make logical decisions. And so, for that reason, I will not be supporting the NP zoning changes. I wanted to read all that into the record, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Munder or other council members?
No comment on, no question or comment on the.
My only, my only question or comment, and if, if someone else wanted to correct me, I have no problem, but when I was reading the ordinance and, and looking at creating what we're, what we're calling this buffer zone, how, there, there's no limitation to the number of houses, unless I missed something in here, the number of houses that could be categorized to create this, this buffer zone. At least, I did not see anything in here. And what, what starts to happen is that this chain reaction of Neighborhood Professional saying that they're going from Community Commercial and then moving down to Neighborhood Professional, and then sliding it straight on down the, straight on down the road, which just, I, I think is, is what is happening right now. I also agree with Councilmember Demoter on, with, with the broad statement of, we have so many different zones within our town that I think maybe the idea of simpler is better goes, goes along with that. And so, those, those are just my, my opinions.
Now, I'll not correct you, but I'd say there is no limit in the number of houses that can be applied in a group or for Neighborhood Professional. And I don't believe during the discussion of the planning commission, that was ever brought up or taken into consideration. Most of these changes, it was identified during, I believe, one of the planning, master plan workshops, that it's time to maybe adjust some or bring it into a little bit more modern terms and things. So that's most of the changes that were made in here. And I, I'm not saying what you two are bringing up about the specific and the tightness of the zones couldn't be changed, but that's not the intent here, to change where it can be applied or anything else. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Any other council members with comments?
I would just agree with Councilmember Demoter and Council President that I think our zoning is getting very complicated, and simpler is better.
I agree, exactly what she just said.
All right. There was a motion and a second. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Ordinance twenty-two-two-five, the Neighborhood Professional District, say aye.
Aye, but, okay, go ahead, Tom.
Nope, I was going to keep going.
No, no, I just got a question why, it's like, more so, why is it under the impression that this is complicating the zoning districts where it's not? It's not adding any new, say, where it can be applied or anything else. None of, none of that was changed. It was more of a clarification of if anything, it improves the district, like, say, like, it adds something that wasn't there, like hours of operation. That was not present in the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Professional. It requires, it makes it more of anything, a more compatible use to surrounding residential districts, more so than, I wanted to say, restrictive is the wrong term, but it's not adding a new classification, it's just an updated code. And I'll agree with you that some of the code does need to be looked at and reviewed, but you got to remember, if this dies, it puts it back to where it was, and it could potentially cause problems, it more so than help if it doesn't get approved tonight. So that's all I wanted to say on that. It's not intended to be more restrictive, it just restricts the uses that could go on there and put, you know, criteria of use there. So.
No, no problem. I was going to rescind my vote and then let you talk.
Sorry about that, sir.
Nope, you kept on going, and we'll let it finish. All right, so I'll go ahead and remake the motion for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay, nay. I get that wrong every time.
It's okay, all right. All right, next up is Ordinance twenty-two-two-six, this is to adopt the tax rates for fiscal year twenty-two-two-twenty-two-three. At this time, the mayor sets the tax rates, and the mayor, current sitting mayor, did not make any changes to the tax rate. So right now, it is still set on sixteen, I'll just say sixteen cents per one hundred dollars of the assessed property value. Did anyone have any comments or questions on the tax rate? All right. I guess I should have made a motion first, and I apologize. I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is Ordinance twenty-two-two-seven, this is an ordinance to adopt and approve the budget for the town of Mount Airy for the fiscal year twenty-two-two-twenty-two-three. We worked at a budget workshop the other night, thought it was very successful. Thank you for Town Staff, as well as the mayor, to present a balanced budget, we appreciate it. I'll make a motion for adoption, is there a second?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reed, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is Ordinance twenty-two-two-eight, this is a budget amendment to allocate grant funding in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. This is up for adoption. I'll make a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. Any discussion, discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next, Ordinance twenty-two-two-nine, this is the issuance of citations, this is also up for adoption. Would someone else like to make a motion? I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds, got to be faster, buddy. All right. Any discussion on the issuance of citations with the changes that were made?
I would like to just comment, if I could.
Yes, please.
I want to say thank you to the mayor, because I think, I think I know, you, you guys and, and council members also are doing a great job looking at our code, catching things that need to be cleaned up, things that need to be corrected. I don't know if you guys realized prior to this that you could go out and issue a citation to a citizen.
I did, they used to give us ticket books, believe it or not.
I don't know, I thank you, I just want to say thank you to the mayor for really working diligently to get some of this stuff cleaned up in our code.
I appreciate that. And after, provided this gets passed, then we'll go into the procedures book and make the adjustment there as well. It still references Maryland State Troopers and stuff.
I know former Council President Peter Held always was very excited about the ticket book. Sorry, sorry, Council President.
Can we get his ticket book just for, like?
We'll see, we might be able to find one upstairs.
Yeah, can we, like, we have, like, one ticket?
That would be awesome, all right.
I can give you one, I can issue you.
All right. All those in favor of Ordinance twenty-two-two-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Charter Amendment Resolution twenty-two-two-one, modifying officers and employees authorized to issue municipal citations. This is up for adoption, I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Galetti, seconds. And this is just to change our charter, the previous one was our town code, so that's the reason for this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we're on letter I. Ordinance twenty-two-two-ten, this is a town code correction regarding the number of Board of Appeal members, this is also up for adoption. Would someone like to make a motion? I know, I'm sorry. All right, I'll just keep going. I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. This was, there were errors in chapter forty-seven, that was different than section one-twelve- dash fifty-seven, so we needed to remove forty-seven, that's the reason for this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Ordinance twenty-two-two-eleven, this is a budget amendment to reallocate eighteen thousand nine hundred in the MAPD budget for Lexipol Solutions software implementation. This is up for adoption, I'll motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Galetti, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief Reitz has, has talked about that before, that's why I didn't have any discussion, plus, I don't think he's, oh, he is here, sorry. I haven't looked up in a while. Next, Ordinance twenty-two-two-twelve, this is to amend code to align with Carroll County's Forest Stand, Forest Stand delineation plan. This is for introduction and then referral to planning. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds, and it goes off to planning. Next is Ordinance twenty-two-two-thirteen, this is a budget amendment to reduce the MAPD retirement line seventy thousand, this is for introduction. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds, we'll see this next month. I did speak with Katie before the meeting, and she didn't really mind that we're not doing these as an emergency amendment, so that's why I canceled that part. Next is Ordinance twenty-two-two-fourteen, this is a budget amendment to reduce the MAPD capital line for the police station in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. I'll second, or, sorry, I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Munder.
No problem. And while you're getting these, for anyone listening, the next, anything that's budget amendments now, just what I would classify as general housekeeping, to make sure the budget balance is at the end of the year. That's why it's just seems to be all budget amendments right now.
I'll just add fiscal year.
Fiscal year, sorry.
No problem. Next is Ordinance twenty-two-two-fifteen, this is a budget amendment to reduce the capital line for the Center Street connection in the amount of one million dollars. This is an introduction, I'll introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Reed, seconds, we'll see this also next month. Next, Ordinance twenty-two-two-sixteen, this is a budget amendment to reduce the capital line for Wildwood Park Parking Lot in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This is for introduction, I'll introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Galetti, seconds, we'll see this next month. Next is Ordinance twenty-two-two-seventeen, this is a budget amendment to reduce the water and sewer line capital, capital line, nope. Budget amendment to reduce the water and sewer capital line for vehicle purchases in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds, we'll see this next month.
Let me make the motion for the next one, so you can.
Let me make the motion for the next one so you can maybe not get tongue tied and...
It's okay.
Okay.
Next is ordinance 2022-18. This is a budget amendment to reduce the general fund capital line for storm sewer cured in pipe lining using the ARPA fund in the amount of $600,000. I'll introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Galetti, seconds. We'll see this next month.
I knew I was going to.
Oh, yeah.
I think he's laughing at me.
Yeah.
Feelings are hurt. Next is ordinance 2022-19. This is a budget amendment to reallocate $42,98 for the MAPD body cameras from capital line to operating line. This is for introduction, I'll introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, seconds. We'll see this also next month. Very good. Great job, everybody. All right. Next, under unfinished business, this is Flatiron Building. We, I don't even know how long ago, back in May, maybe January, voted to approve $40,000 for Design Collective to present tonight the options on the Flatiron Building. We also had Larry Vallée, okay, also present his option of the Flatiron Building. Councilmembers, I am not asking for a vote on a project at this time. Currently, what I have on the agenda is a vote to retain the structure of that. So if there's no discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I move that the town of Mount Airy Flatiron Building be demolished and removed no later than six months from today, or as soon as is practicable thereafter.
Okay, is there a second with the motion?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Reed, seconds. All right, so the motion on the floor is to, correct me if I'm wrong, council member, to demolish and remove the building within the next, or it needs to be completed in six months, or?
Yes, to be demolished and removed no later than six months from today, or as soon as is practicable thereafter.
Okay, that is the motion on the floor. All those in favor?
I have comments.
I'll remove my motion to vote.
Good. Thank you. I was hoping I wouldn't have to read this tonight. I think it would be more prudent to wait a month, since we just heard all these plans tonight. So it kind of bothers me that we're jumping into a vote that takes down this building. And I'm going to read this whole thing, it'll take me about three minutes, maybe five. Nothing drives the elected officials in this town more nuts than answering the same questions over and over again each election cycle. And at a constant question for the last, for at least a decade, has been, what is your answer to the Flatiron Building? Well, I'm done answering the question too, and I have waffled a time or two over the years, but tonight, as the mayor of this town, I am so certain in my convictions that I'm willing to say with absolutely no uncertainty that the concerned citizens of this town deserve the right to restore this building with the assistance and coordination of Preservation Maryland and through their own volunteer task force established by me. I'll start with the economic argument by saying we simply don't have the money to build a new building or to even create a suitable plaza. Economically, Preservation Maryland, through grants and volunteer efforts, makes the most sense in that regard. Secondly, the Flatiron is iconic to Mount Airy. It is our Bromo-Seltzer Tower, it is our hemisphere, our space needle, our reunion tower, our St. Louis Arch. It identifies our Main Street. It may not be perfect, but we must preserve what we have and turn it into a gem. And that can be done, and that's what Larry Vallée showed us tonight. Look at the train station, the caboose, and Rails to Trails. These identify our Main Street. The Flatiron is an iconic part of our identity. It's shown over there, shown over there, and anybody who knows our Main Street knows about the Flatiron Building. Over the last several months, I've watched this group of preservationists and frankly, waited for them to fold up their tent and leave the cause behind. But Larry Vallée and Jim Molesworth and the Historical Society and myself want this building saved. We are in it for the long haul. I was at the Historical Society meeting when they voted to support on saving the Flatiron Building. The moment was unanimous and the comments were non-debatable because they weren't just voting with their hands, they were voting with their memories, and the conversations were historic and vivid. Mr. Wagner was there at the time, and recently, his daughter, who we all know, Wendy, sent us an email and she said, "I know you're often faced with some difficult decisions as a council member. This is not one of them." I have no doubt Secretary Peters wandered every corner of that building, and I have no doubt that their son looks at that Flatiron and imagines his grandfather sitting in that building, making decisions that have shaped our town. And someday, perhaps he'll be walking with this kid and he'll have stories to tell about generations of history in that building as well. There are many tough decisions being made by this council. Many are made by looking at bureaucratic paper, the budget, modernization, and admittedly, safety concerns. But sometimes, you have to separate yourself from the paper and realize that some things aren't dictated by spreadsheets and data. Not every amenity is meant to make money or become the most efficient or useful thing of modern times. A 10-foot by 30-foot caboose makes no sense on paper. Museums do not make sense on paper, but no one denies that we need them. You all on the council are contemplating the hardest decisions concerning development in and around town in the last two decades. We all know there's tension around so much growth and so much change. The least we can do is let a significant percentage, even if it's not the majority, keep something that they identify as Mount Airy, their icon, their symbol of how things used to be, their parade route to the carnival grounds, something they can be proud of, something they can control. Main Street is something I promised to protect. It was a staple in my campaign, and I sat at a campaign forum where my opponent also cited was saving the building. So what I am offering this evening is to free you from this burden. I am offering to take responsibility of this building for better or worse. If agreed, then when you are asked, what should be done about the Flatiron Building, your answer can be, "The mayor took it off our plate, and whatever happens now, it's his own." And if things go great, you're welcome to celebrate the victory. And if things go south, you may point a finger at me. But I know we'll be successful. At a time when so many apparently are feeling a bit disenfranchised due to developments, I feel this council owes it to this group of people, even if you cannot see the physical sense of it, to keep this building and attempt to restore it to the glory as an iconic symbol it was, it has always been on our Main Street. We can and must return the Flatiron to its useful service by preserving it and turning it into something we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Councilmember Demoter, do you have comments? Or do you, I was going to ask you if you would like to keep your motion.
I have, I have a lot of comments and justifications I can read out. Let me just make a few very brief comments and then I would like to proceed with the motion.
Yes, sir.
It does come down, as I mentioned, this is, this is a key safety issue. It's a key safety issue because if you try to restore that building, you have not solved the safety issue on Main Street. That is a key issue. Secondly, there are many safety issues associated with the existing building. I'm convinced that there is an imminent safety hazard and risk associated with that Flatiron Building indicated by the host of structural issues already identified and not addressed for over 10 years. I think the town's structural assessment, there are 20 issues identified and there's only two that have been resolved. The likely structural issues suggested by the flaws in the building foundation and roofing is found in the town's assessment and the fact that we truly do not know because we haven't conducted an in-depth invasive structural integrity assessment. So it is a safety issue. I am also concerned, based on the plan for restoring that building, I believe that's going to eventually, you're looking at a completely rebuild of that building for what's being proposed, for the under walking and the changes to the top. I feel like we are just throwing good money after bad. I think that we need to take decisive action with no more kicking the can down the road. We have conducted numerous studies, we performed an engineering assessment, the community has been surveyed, we've discussed this numerous times at town council meetings, we've held numerous public meetings and public hearings, we've developed a downtown vision plan that lays out the plan for how to resolve the Flatiron Building and also highlighted the safety issues. And then we conducted this most recent study on the Design Collective's options. And so I think that trying to restore that building may actually cost more money than, for example, putting in a brand-new plaza is one of the options was from Design Collective's. I have many, many, many more comments I can make. Oh, let me make this one. You know, we did, we did this town community survey, and you heard tonight from numerous people who got up and said, regarding growth and development, "We have spoken. Town, you must listen to us. We do not want more growth." Well, we had many questions in the survey about the Flatiron Building, and they spoke to us, the citizens spoke to us, about the Flatiron Building. And 75% of all of our citizens told us they wanted the building removed and replaced with another option such as a park, plaza, or new building. That's 75%. Only 7% chose to refurbish the building. I understand we have communities of practice, communities of, you know, circles of influence, groups of stakeholders, but one of the things I've learned through this whole survey process is a reminder, we need to represent all of the citizens in Mount Airy, not just some special interest groups. And the broad community of Mount Airy has told us they want the building to come down and they want something else there. I have many more points, but I think at this point, I feel very strongly, we need to do this, we need to stop kicking the can down the road. The Design Collective options will be good for us to revitalize our Main Street and take care of safety issues. So I would like to continue with my motion and have a vote on that motion.
Okay. That motion is going to continue. Do you still second that motion?
I do.
Okay. Councilwoman Reed, still seconds. So the motion on the, on the floor right now is to demolish and remove the building within, or the time period of six months. All those in favor of removing the Flatiron Building, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Councilmember Demoter, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Munder and Councilwoman Galetti, vote nay. All right, next up is mayor, council, and staff reports. Mr. Mayor, you are up with your mayor's report.
Thank you. Rose Trails, over on the east side, we had a really nice workday on April 9th and cleaned up everything up to where the boardwalk is. Town cleanup was on April 23rd. Thank you to the Rotary Club, who's very heady, but Kiwanis, we're out there, Lions, lots of volunteers. Lot of trash got picked up, and the beauty of that workday is it wasn't just public land. I mean, we went everywhere and just picked up wherever the garbage was. So it was nice. Okay. And the only update on Harrison Lashir at this point is that the county administrator did send us a, an email suggesting, as a starter, that we enter some discussions about our OPE zoning and see if there's anything that, any adjustments we can make that might make it more favorable for the county commissioners. And we have not gotten back to her at this point, but I'll be meeting with the staff to talk about that. And council members, at least two of you, are more than welcome to come and join in on that.
Just let me know when I'll try and make it or should be there.
You bet.
Mayor, thank you.
All right. Next up is Recreation and Parks Board, Council Secretary Reed.
Recreation and Parks Board met virtually on April 21st. Just a reminder that Rails to Trails on the east side is closed and will remain closed until approximately late April. At our last meeting, the board spoke about the Twin Arch Crossing soccer fields. There was some concern raised that as we go into fall soccer, with the new community, Brittany Manor right behind it, that soccer balls might get kicked into the new community, causing some damage to the houses. So we spoke about fencing. We actually spoke about fencing at our budget hearing this past week, so hopefully that will be going up soon. The skate park slash pump track, the board approved, the concept drawings for phase one and phase two. That motion was made pending confirmation from Barney that no water management needed be, needed to be completed in the first two phases. We did confirm that with Barney, so they are good to go as soon as they can fundraise what they need for phase one and phase two. The Windy Ridge Multi-Use Trails, we've talked about this for a long time and we actually made some progress this past weekend. The board approved a volunteer day for this past Saturday, April 30th. I think about 20 community members showed up and we spent about four hours clearing out trails. We accomplished more than we could have imagined. There are two more trail days scheduled, May 21st and June 11th. So if anyone is interested in volunteering, it's a lot of fun, I would highly suggest it. The group is also applying for a grant through MORE to help fund some of the larger, more technical areas of the trail. In speaking to them on Saturday, they're hoping that within two years, the entire multi-use trails will be complete. So Neil and I will be out there again on May 21st and June 11th, and every other event after that. So please contact the Ellis's if you are interested in volunteering. We've been talking about the replacement of the Summit Ridge Playground for a while. We are hoping to apply for a grant this coming year to, to replace some of the pieces in that park, if not the whole park. It was, certain areas were deemed unsafe and some equipment had to be removed, so I will keep you updated on that. Avis 5K for Down Syndrome is June 4th at Watkins Park. We have a beer garden, live music, it's family-friendly, pet-friendly, and you can register at active.com. Last thing I'll mention is I had my very first Academy for Excellence in Local Governance Academy Council meeting. I nominated Councilwoman Lynn Galetti to be an instructor in the Effective Meetings class. Lynn, did you turn in your application?
I did.
Good. So we will have one of our own teaching a course at the next MML meeting. The Parks and Rec Board will meet again virtually on May 19th.
Thank you very much. Next up is EDC and Planning Commission with Councilmember Munder.
All right, I will start off by, with the Planning Commission meeting. Just make note that the Board of Appeals will be holding a meeting Tuesday, May 5th, I mean, excuse me, sorry, Tuesday, May 10th at, what time is it, 7? At 7:00 PM here in Town Hall to consider application for a home-based daycare and a bed and breakfast on Paradise Avenue. Thought it was done, but not quite. Sorry. During the meeting for the Planning Commission was held April 25th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. There were, it was basically a continuation of listening to rezoning requests for South Main Street that was held over from the March meeting. There were three requests, rezoning requests for South Main that were, that were voted on. The request, rezoning request for 1801 South Main, also known as the Voslo, to go to CC, Community Commercial, was approved. 1701 South Main was approved. oh one South Main was approved for limited commercial. Seventeen oh three was approved for limited commercial also, and then seventeen oh nine South Main was approved for limited commercial. I would like to make a note that on the original applications, they were applying for a community commercial, but the Planning Commission did take into consideration town staff recommendation that they be down zoned to limited commercial because they believe, it was believed that this would be a better transition to any residential or anything else on the north, the west side of South Main Street. For the most part, as was mentioned earlier, the Master Plan Workshop, excuse me, I'm getting things confused here. There is a Master Plan Workshop this Thursday, May fifth, six PM here in Town Hall, which the, the aspect of the 2023 Comprehensive Rezoning Master Plan topic will be the housing element that is required to be included into the master plan. The part of the housing element that is new this year would be affordable housing component of the housing element. And I believe John has obtained a presentation by Joseph Griffiths of the Maryland Department of Planning to discuss the housing element and the affordable housing component of that element. So anyone that wants to come in, listen to the Master Plan Update. Be here Thursday, May fifth at six PM. As mentioned earlier, there is a Beck Property Joint Workshop being held at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company on June the second at seven PM. The next Planning Commission meeting is May twenty-third, seven PM here at Town Hall. EDC, it was a light meeting. Not much to report on that, other than that some upcoming events are happening. The Bark in the Park is at Watkins, May twenty-first. The upcoming Main, Mount Airy Main Street Festival, excuse me, Farmers Market begins June and will run from September on Wednesdays, three to seven PM in the newly repaved rail yard, thanks to MAMSA. That will conclude, but let me just do a quick update on the Farmers Market. There are over thirty vendors that have applied. There are a mix of old and new. One of the new vendors will be a local company specializing in duck. So hopefully, the duck that walks Main Street will not take offense to that. They do have a house wine that will be offering samples for that and will be on sale for their website. And I would also like to introduce or remind people that the barber pole is once again on Main Street in Mount Airy. The Ford County Barber Shop has moved down next to Twenty-four Seven and St. James Thrift Shop. And the next EDC meeting will be May twenty-fifth at seven PM in Town Hall.
Planning Commission?
I did plan.
Oh, that was planning?
Yeah, I did plan already, sir.
Nope, my apologies.
No problem.
Next up is Recycling and Sanitation Commission, Councilmember Demoter.
Okay, thank you. April was a very busy month for our commission. We, we hit the triple crown of events. Our, our first was a shred battery event that we held on April second, and that's where we collected ninety-nine hundred pounds of shredded material that went up into the chute for shredding, so that was successful. On April twenty-third, we held our National Drug Takeback Day partnering with MAPD. You heard from the chief that fifteen bags of prescription drugs and other medications were collected and another successful event. And then lastly, we held our Spring Bulk Pickup Event this past Saturday, April thirtieth. We collected four full large dumpsters, dumpsters of bulk trash, plus one full dumpster of metal. So the, the event was actually very busy and, and very well attended. I was surprised at how many people came out, given the fact that we switched to the bulk drop-off approach at the town parking lot, and in previous years, we did the curb-side pickup. There was some miscommunications on the types of materials acceptable for drop-off. For example, the town website had listed that some acceptable items were things such as computers and TVs. Then during the day of the event, individuals determined that those would not be acceptable onsite at the event. And so for that miscommunication, I truly apologize. We made a mistake. We're sorry for the inconvenience it posed to a few folks who brought these materials up for drop-off. And if you want to be upset, please direct that to me, as I am the commission liaison. I have broad shoulders and I can take it. I own it, and we will do a much better job next time. On yard waste collections, we're in full swing now, and we have a yard waste collection this Saturday, May seventh, and then we have another one on May twenty-first. Our next meeting will be on May eighteenth at seven PM. Very quickly, Main Street Safety Task Force, we've made good progress in standing up the task force. I briefed the mayor on our progress and path forward. We've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes since our first meeting on March first. We finalized a purpose and objective statement, and we'll be working with town staff to create a task force webpage. We're focusing our actions around several key themes. Those are more intentional traffic surveillance and enforcement, efforts to affect behavioral change in speeding habits, community education and outreach, and then potential regulatory approaches and changes for Main Street. Those are the areas that we're gravitating around right now. And I want to thank the chief, as always, for his participation. He's been very supportive. And actually, quite a few of the ideas that we're coming forth with were things that, that he has suggested. So again, thank you for all the support, and thank you, Mayor, for the support of the effort. That completes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Streets and Roads Commission and Beautification Commission, Councilwoman Galetti.
I'll do beautification first. The meeting, last meeting was held on April nineteenth. A new member was appointed to the commission, Christopher Spauer, Spower, I apologize, I'm gonna say that wrong. Commission is busy working around the town gardens and parks. There's been no planning decisions made yet on tree planting in Windy Ridge Park. When the commission is given more information, they will proceed with the design and update on the project. Chris Spower, who is a, was appointed, he's a volunteer for Carroll County Forestry Board, and his knowledge will greatly benefit the commission. They are working on the sign at Wildwood to have some information, still working on that. And the next meeting is May seventeenth at Town Hall. And if you want to follow them, they're on Facebook. Streets and Roads, we did not have a meeting. It's every other month. Our next meeting is May thirty-first, six thirty, most likely still in the virtual format because we really like having the ability to record the meetings and have people that cannot attend Town Hall watch the meetings that way. There is, however, a huge thing coming up. We have worked with, and thank you so much to Lucy Regal for working with people around town, Carroll County Health Department, and the date of the first Farmers Market, June first, there will be a car seat safety check up in the municipal parking lot. Thank you to staff who's been working with her also to secure the municipal lot that day. So look for flyers that will come out to give you more details, the specific times, but the date of the first Farmers Market, car seat safety check. Next meeting, again, May thirty-first.
Thank you. Next up is Water and Sewer Commission and Mount Airy Sustainability Commission. I had both meetings last month, and I'll start with Mount Airy Sustainability Commission. We had an Eagle Scout come and present to us some projects for the garden, to do a garden, a sustainability garden around our sign. We also elected Michelle Lucille to be the garden coordinator. If you have not had an opportunity to drive by, get out, walk around the community garden, I highly encourage you to do so. It's located on Rising Ridge Road, just after the commercial properties or at the end of the stop sign there as you come up the hill. So please go visit our new item. The state has refunded the Sustainability Maryland Project. This was passed by House and Senate, and this is one of the, the achievements that the commission actually gets awarded for in keeping the town of Mount Airy sustainable. So there's a number of projects that we get points for to help make sure that Mount Airy stays green. My next meeting is June fifteenth, seven PM, probably either at the garden or in Town Hall, but check the website for details. I also had my Water and Sewer Commission. Looking at that, we went over rainfall and wastewater treatment plant numbers. We also talked about PSA. Commission had a, had a very good lengthy discussion about PSAs that would be beneficial to residents, updating graphics and those types of things. So we're gonna get with Ashley on those. There was discussion around the proposed state law, State Bill two seventy-three, which is PFAS. We went over some nitrate numbers for the Mount Airy water system. We got an email from a resident saying that our numbers were, were extremely high. However, those numbers only looked at the highest number. We've been as low as, so the highest number was eight point three. We've been as low as one point nine. That was just one test out of one of the wells. So we, the commission wanted to take some time to address the, the residents' concerns about our nitrate numbers. And Dick did a great job explaining about fertilizer. When you can put fertilizer down, that actually causes the nitrates in the ground. So thank you very much for that. And that would conclude my report. Tom, Town Attorney?
So the one issue that will be up for a vote next time that sort of hangs out there is the regular annexation. First of all, were there any additional terms that you all wanted me to include or demand, if you will, negotiate in the annexation agreement that is not already contained in the written document? If you want to email me along the way, please do, but obviously, I'll need to be engaging with the other side for any additional terms. I assume one of them will be a condition to the amendment to the Water and Sewer Master Plan to upgrade, if you will, the, basically the category under which there would be water and sewer extension from where it is now, which I can't remember exactly what it is, but ten-plus years maybe, to something sooner as a condition. Secondly, what hangs out there, because the way Frederick County does it, which is, in my experience, unique, with respect to the zoning waiver, again, pursuant to the state code, if you don't get a zoning waiver from the, in this case, the county government, Frederick County, then for the first five years after an annexation, we would not control that property zoning. The county would, after the expiration of five years, then we would control it. The idea is that if you obtain a waiver and by you, I'm really referring to developer because it's really for the developer's benefit, right? If a waiver is given, then obviously, you don't, you know, the town is immediately vested upon annexation with zoning authority. What throws a wrinkle in this is that Frederick County is telling us, why I don't know, that they will not consider granting a waiver without a signed annexation agreement. Now normally, not always the case, but normally, the annexation agreement, again, in my experience, is only entered into after you've voted to approve the annexation. Now, there have been in the past, Zeltman, I believe, exceptions to that, where basically, an annexation agreement was signed in advance of the vote, I believe. And of course, one of the conditions is it's null and void if the annexation is not ultimately approved. And in this case, you could certainly authorize the mayor to do that, and then obviously, the agreement is littered and would be littered with a lot of, you know, it's null and void if you don't approve the annexation. We're not promising that we're approving the annexation. This is just the, the tool by which we at least get the waiver issue in front of the county. Or you could conversely not have that signed now, you could, assuming you approved an annexation, which I'm not assuming. But assuming you did, you could say, look, it's not effective until some date in the future, and only if there's a waiver granted. You would then sign the, the annexation agreement. Senate of the county get the waiver, hopefully. If you don't get the waiver, then all bets are off, and the annexation is not approved. I kind of sensed that you probably would prefer the latter rather than entering into an annexation agreement in advance of an annexation. It's, to me, it just doesn't make sense, but I wanted to make sure that I'm doing your will in this regard. So I, I bring that up, and if my intuition on that is incorrect, please let me know so that I can do that, okay? And otherwise, I'd simply report that, you know, assisted in preparing the ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Also, on and off, working with the chief, there's certain compliance that brought about by the Police Accountability Act that is required by July first, twenty twenty-two, and there's great confusion, hopefully clarified recently, as to essentially the accountability board that we, in effect, report to or are governed by because we are the only police department, municipal police department, that polices in two different counties. So I'm working with the chief on that, I think. So that's it.
Thank you. I believe there's a police department that does states on the eastern shore. They're in Delaware and...
No, we're...
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
But we're unique in ourselves, so.
What, what was the end of that discussion? Was it that we report to Carroll, or are we going both ways, or what?
Both ways, I think, is ultimately where some clarifying legislation would tell us to go. The clarifying legislation that we, we, before they kind of look them off the scent of legacies, like the state police, the Accountability Board, there was no Accountability Board, but the Administrative Charging Committee was out of Annapolis. So we had an Administrative Charging Committee that's not even part of our community deciding this one would be for our officers.
And, and worse yet, appeals go to, would go to Annapolis.
Right. So fast forward, they said whatever happens on the Carroll County side is in Carroll County. Whatever happens on Frederick County side is in Frederick County. So we have two different police advisory boards and two different administrative charging committees. So that's where we're at right now, barring any further changes.
Okay. But there is no requirement for our municipality to have an advisory board or an accountability board?
That did not pass this bill, right?
Okay.
We don't have the ability to have our own police advisory board. It's all dependent on the councils.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilmembers, you received the town administrator report. You also got an email for code enforcement, and zoning administrator report is in our packets. It looks like we have a closed meeting this evening. The closed meeting is three dash three oh five B, subsection three, to consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose of matters directly related there to subject Barkus and Humphreys Properties on South Main Street. At the conclusion of this closed meeting, the council will be adjourned. Councilmember Demoter?
Yay.
Councilmember Munder?
Yay.
I'm an aye. Councilwoman Reed?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Galetti?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and we'll go into a closed session.